The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your follower, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen, in compliance with NJ SA 10:4 and in accord with DCA guidelines with regard to the functioning of virtual meetings, this regularly scheduled meeting in the Jackson Township Boardroom has been terminated. Danielle should be on Zoom.
Danielle, are you there?
Oh, yes, I couldn't hear you clearly.
Make sure my mic is on. All right. Better?
Yes.
Thank you, Danielle. Can we have roll call, please?
Yes, Mr. Costanzo?
He's absent with an excuse.
Okay, Ms. Fritsch?
Here.
Mr. Hurley?
Here.
Ms. McElhenny?
Here.
Ms. Camello?
Here.
Mr. Najarian? Mr. Book?
Here. Thank you. Do we have any resolutions tonight, Danielle?
Yes, there is one resolution for this evening. It's Resolution 2021-08, Siegel, Block 4605, Lot 31-6, Elmswell Court, granting approval of a variance to construct a deck. Eligible are Ms. Fritsch, Mr. Hurley, Ms. McElhenny, Ms. Camello, Mr. Najarian, Mr. Book.
Can I have a motion and a second to approve, please?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Fritsch?
Yes.
Mr. Hurley?
Yes.
Ms. McElhenny?
Yes.
Ms. Camello?
Yes.
Mr. Najarian? Mr. Book?
Yes. No other resolutions?
No, that is concludes the resolutions for this evening.
Any minutes for approval?
February 17th, 2021.
Can I have a motion and a second to approve those minutes, please?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Fritsch?
Yes.
Mr. Hurley?
Yes.
Ms. McElhenny?
Yes.
Ms. Camello?
Yes.
Mr. Najarian? Mr. Book?
Yes. Thank you, Danielle. On vouchers, I have one for King.
I do have mine with me, sorry.
So I'll read this one and then you read yours.
Okay.
For King reporting, March 3rd, and the amount is $50. And what's yours, Danielle?
Mine is for payment of the recording secretary, myself, Danielle Sinowitz, for March 3rd, 2021, in the amount of $150.
Can I have a motion and a second to approve and pay vouchers?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Fritsch?
Yes.
Mr. Hurley?
Yes.
Ms. McElhenny?
Yes.
Ms. Camello? Mr. Najarian?
Yes.
Mr. Book?
Yes. Thank you, Danielle.
You're welcome.
I don't see anything on announcements or matters for discussion. I know we're going to treat the calendar in a minute, but before I get to that, I would like our professionals to be sworn and then they can introduce themselves to the public.
Gentlemen, do you solemnly swear or affirm that you, that the information, questions, comments, or opinions that you offer the board into the public shall represent the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Can you kindly go around the room, give your full name, last, and your affiliation?
Evan Hill, Board Engineer. We'd like it better when Fran does the swearing in. It's not easy. Ernie Peters, Board Planner, Jeffrey Papporo, Zoning Officer.
Thank you, gentlemen. All right. Before we jump into the applications, Mr. Alfieri, I think of tonight, on the For Nicole matter, I understand that you're representing the applicant, Mr. For Nicole. Is he out there?
He's outside.
He's outside? Okay.
I can make the rep-- we don't need him.
Never mind, we're good.
Mr. Clayton, I can make the representation. Then we're just going to move for members of the public as well. We're going to move application number three to number four and number four to number three.
All right.
And he's aware of that.
Okay. All right, then with that established, our first applicant tonight is Lisa and Patrick Donato on variance 3351. Mr. Donato, I presume?
Yes.
Okay. Going to need to be sworn first.
Sir, you raise your right hand. You solemnly swear or affirm that the information, testimony, questions, or comments you will present before the board will represent the truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Yes.
Can you give us your full name, spell your last, and your address?
Patrick Donato. Last name's D-O-N-A-T-O, 362 Tall Tree Court.
All right. Mr. Donato, because of sound issues and dynamics of this room, I don't mind that you continue to wear the mask, but you're going to have to speak much more closely to that mic for us to hear you and also for the public to hear you, okay?
Okay.
All right, thank you. What brings you here tonight, Mr. Donato?
We'd like to get a variance to put a six-foot privacy fence up.
As you look to your right, you see the screen?
Yes.
Is that the survey of your property?
Yes, it is.
And let me look at my picture here. All right, so the, so the road farthest most to the right, as we're looking at the screen, I guess that would be farthest to the south, that's Tall Tree Court, is that right?
Yes.
And, and then the road to the west of your property is Sugar Bush Court, is that also right?
Yes.
All right. And you want to put your fence where?
If we want to come off of our porch, straight down towards Sugar Bush, and then down Sugar Bush to the end of the property line.
And, and that's what you've drawn in on the survey, is that right?
Yes. It looks like, yes.
So, as I'm looking at the drawing that you submitted to, submitted to us, the, the fence along Sugar Bush is intended to be a six-foot white plastic fence?
Yes.
That's it? Okay. And then as the fence moves to the, to the rear of the property, are you intending to put the fence right on the property line or in, inside the property line? That's hard to tell from the drawing.
It would be at, on the back half of the property, you mean?
Yes.
That would be on a property line. That would be a chain link.
All right. And that would be a four-foot chain link?
Yes.
Now, on the, on the drawing that you submitted to us, it says, it's printed in, "Not permanent, no concrete." Did you write that in, and what does that mean?
The fence company we talked to said the fence would be vibrated into the ground below the freeze point, so there's no concrete needed to put it in the ground.
Oh, okay.
So it's, it could be, it could be pulled out of the ground and moved if needed be.
Okay, all right. A technique of putting the--
Yes, it's, yeah, this way you don't have to do the concrete.
And, and then as we move over to the other property line, again, the fence is intended to be on your property line?
Yes.
And that's also going to be a four-foot chain link fence?
Yes.
All right, now the confusing part for me is it looks like the line curves off the property line to meet up with your framed garage. Am I reading that right, or is that what you--
No, it'll actually be off the garage. It'll come up and then from the, from the garage over to the property line. There's a, like a 20-foot distance between the garage and the property line.
Board members, any question of Mr. Donato?
It says six-foot solid.
Can Mr. Najarian just use his microphone? I can briefly hear the speaking, but I can't hear what he's saying.
Okay. It says six-foot solid fence.
Correct. Six-foot solid fence is coming off the house and going along Sugar Bush. The rest of the property is going to have the four-foot chain link fence.
Chain link.
Yes.
And is the same technique of drilling into the ground going to be on the plastic fence as well as the chain link?
From my understanding, yes.
Through the chair? I, I just want to clarify, Mr. Donato, so the four-foot chain link to the east of your house, I do also see here four-foot open aluminum with gate, so will that just be in the front?
That'll be, be between the house and the garage.
And the garage, and then from that point back, the chain--
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're on.
Yes, Mr. Hill?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to remind the board that the four-foot chain link fence on the rear and the side and along the garage and connected to the house is not subject to the variance application. That's, that's permitted. The applicant's only here for the six-foot high privacy fence located along the front of the home toward Sugar Bush and then along Sugar Bush to the rear property line. And I think the most important thing here is to ascertain from the applicant the distance off the property line for that fence, since there is a six-foot wide shea tree and utility easement located along that property line.
Did, did you know that you have a six-foot?
Yeah, we would like to go in seven feet from that.
Seven feet from the--
Property line.
Is that going to give him enough room?
Yes.
And he won't interfere with the--
No.
Easement?
He's, they're outside the easement.
Okay, all right. Anything else on that, Mr. Hill? Nothing further?
No.
Board members, any questions, Mr. Fritsch?
Why are you looking to get a white solid fence when everything else is the chain link fence?
Looking for safety and privacy. The back of the house is towards like a neighbor, so people walking up and down the street can't see us. We do have family members and children come over, you know, to hang out. So I don't have to worry about people looking in from the side. The back, it's just a neighbor, it's like a tree line and the neighbors, and the other is another tree line with like a, like a forest behind it. So I don't have to worry about people seeing in from there. I'd rather, I'd like to have like just a privacy on one side of the house. So anyone walking up and down the street can't see everything we're, like if I'm hosting a barbecue or something.
Thank you.
Board members, any further questions of Mr. Donato? Nothing further? Do you have anything, any other, any other testimony, Mr. Donato? Is it just you?
Just, yeah.
Anything further to add?
No.
No? If there's nothing further, then I'll close this portion of the hearing and I'll open it to the public. Is there anybody in the public that would like to be heard on this application? Anthony, as I'm looking at my screen, I don't see anything, or anybody, or any hands, or any flashing lights, or signals, or anything. No hands up at all.
And there's 12 people on? Eight attendees, thank you.
How can you see the eight? I don't see eight on my screen. Where are you, how come you can see it and I can't?
I, I don't know how to set it up, Mr. Jay.
I tried. As long as, as long as you, you let me out, because I liked it the last time you had it. I could actually tell who was here and how many we had. Press this button, press that button.
Thanks, Anthony.
All right. And so, eight attendees, no hands are up. All right, public portion is closed. Board members, it's ours. Any discussion, motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve this, variance for six-foot solid vinyl white privacy fence. I believe it's seven feet from the property line because of the six-foot easement. Is that correct? Okay, so I'd like to make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Fritsch?
Yes.
Mr. Hurley?
Yes.
Ms. McElhenny? Ms. Camello?
Yes.
Mr. Najarian?
Yes.
Mr. Book?
Yes. Thank you, your application to approve, Mr. Donato. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
My next up is applicant number two, Gary Mayer, variance 3352. Come on up, Mr. Mayor. Can I pick the call? Yes, yes, you can. Thank you. Yes.
I'm going to swear you. If you raise your right hand, you solemnly swear from testimony, information, questions, or comments you're about to present before the board, represent the truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Yeah.
Can you kindly give us your full name, spell your last, and your address?
Gary James Mayer, M-A-Y-E-R, 300 Cherry Street.
So, Mr. Chairman, and I guess to some extent, since I was asked a question about this, it may give, may assist the board to give a little bit of background first, because the property, as you know from the application package, has some history, and I'll ask maybe Mr. Peters to assist as well. So the board will see from their package that in 1988, when the property was zoned R40, even, I should watch my adjectives, but at that time, not even, take strike there, but at that time, the property was, appears to have been undersized as well for, and the applicant appeared for a permission to, to build on an undersized lot. We've seen those kind of cases. My recollection, and based on the resolution from 20855, is that no house had been constructed until then, and Mr. Mayor, he's shaking his head, yes, so it looks like my recollection is correct. So, but the zone had changed. So, the position of the board at that particular time when the applicant came in is, there was a sort of a quasi-legal question about whether or not, you know, in general, we hear the phrase, "The variance is run with the land." So, from the language of the resolutions, I have no specific present recollection from, from 2008, the applicant's position through counsel was to, and they used the term, and we used the term in the resolution, ratify the, the previous approval to allow construction of the house on the undersized lot. That brings us really forward to today, where, as again, as my understanding, and the applicant will testify a little in more detail, that there's a request to build an accessory structure in the, in the front yard of a corner lot. But the question is, unlike a, in theory at least, unlike a C variance purely related to bulk requirements, because it's an undersized lot, the question may be, and I'm going to ask Mr. Peters to assist me with this, my theory as well, that this is an expansion of the non-conforming use. The resolution from 2008, which would make it a D2 variance, the resolution from 2008 speaks in terms of following R3 standards, but because of some quirks in our code in terms of certain approvals, you may be looking at a D2 analysis here and not a, a C, a bulk, a simple C analysis. All that legalese means that the applicant needs, would need five affirmative votes to permit this request. Now, before we go further, and I apologize for all, this is, I'm sure this is, has your head spinning a little bit, and I'm going to apologize for that. Mr. Peters, do you have any, and feel free if you disagree with, with me as well?
Brevity is my strong suit tonight. The answer is, I agree with you.
That's good. All right, so--
Was the original variance granted, that was a C variance, right?
It appears from 1988 that it, no, it was, it was a D variance as well, right?
Well, it was residential use, it was permitted, just, it was an undersized lot, so we're just going to put a C on it, yes.
Well, would be a D, isn't that a D2 also, we're giving--
It's an undersized lot.
Well, the Dahlmyer case, right?
It was an existing one, and it just couldn't meet the bulk requirements. So we're going to put a C. So the question becomes, the accessory use that's being requested here is a, the way the application presented, it says, "A use not permitted itself," the accessory use would be permitted, just in the front yard.
Correct.
That would be a C.
Yeah. Except that if it's, if it's an expansion--
It would be expansion, it would be expansion of unpermitted use, but the use is permitted.
Okay. So I take back the, the five affirmative vote position.
And to clarify that, then, for the rest of us, if you would, Mr. Phil.
So, it's, it's a permitted use. It's a residential use and a residential zone. The existing use is, is permitted in conformance with the prior resolutions in the zone. The applicant is proposing to install an accessory structure on a residential lot zoned R1.
Does it make any difference whether this accessory use is already up and built or not?
No, we've come across those cases in the past. My understanding and the, through, looking through the file, is that there was a notice of violation issued back in August of 2020, and the applicant is here to correct that notice of violation by seeking of dimensional variance relief, or C variance relief, for the accessory structure.
Thank you, Mr. Hill. All right. Mr. Mayor, is it, are you the only one that is going to testify tonight for the application?
Yes.
All right. What can you tell us about the application, sir? What is it that you would like to do, and what are you seeking from this board?
Well, you could see the lot is very small, and I wanted to put a structure to, my son-in-law and my daughter moved in, so I wanted to create more parking space. And he has this really nice car, and there's a lot of oak trees, so I said I would build a, something to protect it. He wanted to put up one of them plastic things, and I was like, I'm a carpenter, and I'm like, you know, I built the house, and I was like, you know, I had to build something nice. And that's what I came up with, you know, over a stone driveway that I had established.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Mayor from the board?
Chairman?
Yes.
Before we continue with questions, I just, I want to make sure that our record's clear. This property's in the R3 residential zone. Mr. Chairman, I'll come back. The resolution in 2008 had it in the R3 zone. This has it in the R1 zone. Let me get that straight, and I'll have my piece at the end of the application.
I, I lost you there, Mr. Peters.
Is the structure they're building. Is it an enclosed garage, sir? No. Okay. Permitted accessory uses are private garages. There's not a statement, a catch-all at the end of the accessory use, the permitted accessory use section of the ordinance says, and other things that look like that. So it's a garage. The board needs to make a determination that this is in fact a garage, and if it's not, then he probably requires a D variance for something that's not permitted in the zone.
Is there a definition for garage in the ordinance?
Perhaps. You're just going to have to give me a couple minutes to do one or the other. I'm unfortunately not able to do both at the same time. There is a definition. I can only paraphrase. I don't have it in front of me. But basically, it says it's a structure that is designed to, to house a vehicle, meaning a garage door, intended to be used as a vehicle, or to accommodate a vehicle.
Would a carport fit into that definition, in your opinion?
Uh, yes.
And, and just so we're clear on a carport, a carport meaning there is only a roof, there are no walls, and you have four, essentially four pillars that are holding up the roof. That is, is that what you mean by a carport? And that a carport, under those circumstances, equates out to a garage? Go ahead, Mr. Peters.
I just want to read the definitions into the ordinance so that there's no confusion, that's all. A garage is a building or structure, or portion thereof, designed, used, or intended to be used for the parking and storage of vehicles. A carport is defined as a roofed structure, or portion of a building or structure, attached to the principal building on the same lot, which provides space for parking and storage of vehicles, and is enclosed on not more than three sides.
If it's not attached, then it can't be a carport, then it's got to be a garage.
Correct.
And if it's a garage, if I follow your reasoning, then it, then it's, it's a D1 variance?
No, if you find that it's a garage-- And you gotta give me a second to get back to that section of the code.
While, while Mr. Peters is looking with the record shoulder, Mr. Costanzo is here.
Mr. Chairman, in the R1 zone, which is the same as in the R3 zone, permitted accessory uses are off-street parking in private garages.
Off-street parking in private garages, is that what I heard you say?
Correct.
I don't know what that means in relation--
I don't either.
In, in relation to this application. Can, can you somehow tie that up for us, Mr. Peters?
Welcome to Jeff's job.
So then, in your opinion, Mr. Peters, what, what is it that we're, that we're doing? Is, are we to treat this as a garage, or a carport, or something else?
If you were asking my opinion, I'd say you treat it as a garage. It was the intent.
Okay, up through the chair.
Go ahead, Mr. Phil.
Is there anything in the ordinance that specifies that a garage has to be enclosed for walls? Is there anything like that? Does the ordinance go into that kind of detail?
Quick, quick answer is no, but if Ernie could pull up the definition of structure, that might help a little bit. I thought we all had that one memorized. Structure is a combination of materials to form a construction for use occupancy or ornamentation, whether installed on, above, or below the surface of a parcel of land. And an accessory structure is a structure which is customarily associated with and subordinate and incidental to the principal structure, and which is located on the same lot. An accessory structure attached to a principal structure shall comply with all respects to the principal structure. An accessory structure attached to a principal structure shall comply with all respects to the principal structure. And we don't define private garages in the ordinance.
So the principal structure is the home.
That's correct.
accessory structure will either be the carport or a garage. And if garages are permitted.
If the board made a finding that this wasn't a garage and it was a carport or something other than a garage, then it needs a variance.
Right.
Otherwise it's a, it's straightforward, it's a permitted accessory use.
So if it's a garage and it's a permitted accessory use, then what is his burden tonight?
The garage, it would be a C variance.
It's a C variance.
And he's here tonight because the accessory structure is forward of the building, meaning it's in the front yard area. Very similar to when you hear six-foot solid fences in the front yard area. It's just not permitted in that location.
Through the chair, so if it were located somewhere else on the property, it would be permitted, permitted?
Yes, if it were behind the footprint of the house, I would call it a permitted accessory structure, whether it be a carport, garage. Maybe the setbacks for an accessory structure, then yes, he wouldn't be here.
Mr. Mayor, what can you tell us about this structure?
I have some pictures on my.
Has anybody seen it? I, I drove out, I took a look at it. And, and I have some concerns. It's in terms of looking at that carport in relation to the other, the other neighbors. You know, the, the neighborhood has a particular flavor to it, a particular style to it. And that carport is right out there, it's almost right out on a road. And, and right now I'm having a hard time justifying that in my own mind, that it, that it's, that it's going to fit. And you're going to be able to carry today, at least with, at least with me, in terms of why you put it there? Why can't it be moved back farther? If the only purpose of that carport is to, I think I heard you say it was, it was to protect your son's car because you have, because some stuff in the trees above. I can appreciate wanting to protect the car, but can you offer us any more? And can you tell us why it can't be moved or somehow put some, in some other place where it wouldn't be so obstructive? And quite frankly, I think more of an eyesore to the neighborhood than, than it currently is. Do you have any, any other alternate suggestion?
Well, there's some big oak trees that kept me from putting it back away from the road further. That's all. I, I, I thought since it was just four six-by-six posts, you know, and you could see through it and, you know, just a roof on it, I just didn't think it would be a, an issue.
Well, this is just, this is just one man talking up here. I'm only one member of the board and I'm just giving you the benefit of, of what I saw. I mean, quite frankly, I like your idea of perhaps knocking down an oak tree and somehow repositioning that so it more conforms to the neighborhood. And it might be closer in and tucked in closer to your house. Because as it currently stands, you know, it's, it's obtrusive. I mean, it is like almost right out in the roadway and it's the first thing that you see. And it definitely does not fit with the surrounding neighborhood. So I, I don't know if there's a middle ground or if anybody else has any suggestions as to how to, you know, ameliorate that look to make it work. But I'm open to suggestions, I'm open to an alternate plan. I'm just giving you the benefit of what I see and, and how I feel about, about the current positioning of that structure.
Mr. Chairman, and maybe it's in there. Does anyone know or does the applicant know how far forward of the front property, front structure that it is from the primary structure? You, you understand the question, like, do we know?
We don't know, only because we have a, a plan that shows the proposed location of the home. We never got a survey showing the actual as-built location of the home.
I, I mean, and that would go to ameliorate some of your issue perhaps, Mr. Chairman, if you talk, and I'm spitballing as I'm articulating this. If it's one foot forward, then, you know, at some level, potentially despite your concern, if you moved it back one foot and it would affect the necessity to cut down the oak tree, that's one thing. But if it's 10 feet forward, that may be a different, you know, analysis on behalf of the board.
I, it would be nice to know, Mr. Hill.
And Jeff is right, we don't have the as-built survey of the property after the house was built. What we have in front of us are the proposed plans prior to construction. The applicant did make an effort to obtain the as-built survey from the building department. I don't believe you've received that yet.
No, this is what they had in archives.
Okay.
But those measurements are accurate where the house sits on the lot.
Okay, so could you, well, you said you built the house, correct?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, you built the house in accordance with the approved plans where it was supposed to be located?
Yes.
Okay, so that's your testimony. So based on that and based on a review of this plan, the carport structure is approximately 17 and a half feet forward of the closest house corner. 17.5 feet. Then you have a 16-foot structure, long structure, and then another seven and a half feet to the property line for a total of 40, four zero feet.
That puts it pretty close to the, to the front of the, to the, to the front property line.
Seven and a half feet, 7.5.
I mean, it's just, it's just me talking, Mr. Mayor. But if, if there was a way that you could revisit this and, and, and take a look at repositioning that, so you get it moved back more. And I, and I, I didn't get out of my car to go walk your property, but it seemed to me that, you know, I saw the gravel and it seems that you did have some room behind that structure where it could conceivably be moved, be moved back and away from the road a whole lot more than, than one foot and still, and still serve your purpose. I'm wondering if you'd be willing to revisit doing something like that or not. I mean, it's up to you, but I'm, I'm just giving you the benefit of, of what I'm thinking and, and about, about the structure and its current position.
Yeah, there, there is a huge oak tree about two feet. I mean, I could move it two feet and it would touch the oak tree. Like, I could have it taken down and cut the post off of the concrete and move it back six, seven feet with the tree removed.
I think, I think six, seven feet would make a dramatic improvement in the overall visual effect. At least that's, that's, that's my feeling. Because I, as, as I looked at it, and I looked at it, and I, and I looked at it, I just, you know, maybe your neighbors, maybe your neighbors don't, don't care and they're fine with it. But in my mind, it's definitely a negative impact to the neighborhood. It definitely changes the flavor of the neighborhood in my mind. If that's, that's all I have, guys.
Mr. Mayor, how did you anchor this into the ground?
It's in concrete.
It's in concrete, so you'll have to cut
Right.
the two-by-six?
They're six-by-sixes treated.
Six-by-six?
They have five and a half by five and a half.
So you'll have to cut them off. And you have to remeasure if you got enough room without cutting down the tree, right? You think you'll have enough space to move it back?
I'd have to have the tree cut down.
You'll, you'll have it cut down?
Yeah.
Yes, Mr. Hill.
Is it, do you have a garage in this building, in your home?
No, the property was too small to, to fit anything other than that footprint.
The, the driveway that's shown on your survey that comes from Oak Leaf Street onto your property, looks like a bit of a driveway, you might use that for parking, then you have a walkway that goes into the house.
That is not accurate to what I have.
What do you have?
It's something like that, but
What is that, the structure?
Lot different.
The part of the building that is closest to Oak Leaf. Is, is that a living space in there? See what I'm, it's hard to point out here, but it, the part that almost attaches to the driveway itself. It goes closest to the driveway.
That little bump out?
Yeah, what is that?
Oh, that's living space.
Are there windows there?
Yes.
On, on both sides?
Yes.
So you couldn't put a carport on one of those sides?
Uh, no.
Okay, can you see where I have the, the red dot there?
Yeah.
Okay. This area in here is living space.
Yes.
You couldn't put a, a small carport in this area and extend the driveway there? Could you do that?
Uh, yes.
Because then you're away from, you're away from the street. You can make it look like the house in a way. I, I agree with the, with the chairman, it's kind of an eyesore the way it's structured now. Not your house, I mean, it's the
Yeah.
the garage.
Mr. Hill?
So for the applicant, I just to clarify, if your proposed carport is moved, and it sounds like the board is really exploring opportunities where this could be moved to. If it is moved, and I want Jeff to confirm this too, behind the front of your house. So it could be next to the side or it could be further back in the rear yard. But if it is moved beyond the front face of your home, then you may not need a variance. Other than possibly for side yard setback, but we're not sure of that yet.
Well, the R1 zone requires a 20-foot side yard setback for a garage. Because this is a corner lot, there's two fronts, two sides, no rear. So it would be a 20-foot setback from the property line and a 10-foot setback to the house.
So they would be, yeah, so you would require dimensional variances in that case unless you put it in your backyard. Because it looks like right now your house is about 22 feet off the property line and an accessory structure would have to be 20. So you would still need variance relief from it. But you wouldn't need it because it's in the front yard. Now you're just talking about a, a dimensional variance for side yard setback.
If I had the oak tree removed and moved it, say, four, five, six feet back, would that?
Well, what Mr., focusing on what Mr. Hill is suggesting, because his suggestion tied into what Mr. Hurley was suggesting may be the perfect solution here. So I, I would focus in on what
So
what he's saying.
To move it next to the house?
Behind the front corner of your house. That's the easiest way for me to explain it. Because anything along the front of your house, you're here because it's in the front yard, right? And also because you need dimensional relief from the side yard setback. What I, what, what I hear of the board is having a, the bigger issue with of what you're requesting is the fact that it's in the front yard. So if you move it behind the front of your house, understand?
Yes.
Then you only need a side yard setback variance. And possibly a variance because it's closer than 10 feet to your house. We've seen detached garages that are within 10 feet of a principal structure in the past. So I don't think that's as heavy of a lift for the board, but but I think if, if you're, if, what I'm hearing is, if I were in your shoes, there's a, there's an issue right now with it being in the front yard. So either, if, if you move it five feet, that doesn't accomplish removing it from the front yard. So is it possible for you to go evaluate whether or not you can put it behind the front of your house? And therefore you'd only be, therefore you'd only need side yard setback variance relief?
Sure.
Is that something you'd want to go explore further and then come back to? Come back to the board?
Yes.
Excellent idea. So how many feet, say it again, excuse me.
Well, it's difficult, it'd be approximately 20 feet. But I think what the applicant needs to do is take a string line along the front of your house on that side. Go all the way over about 40 feet, 50 feet, continue along the front of your house. That's, that's the line you have to be behind.
And then the back of it would be close to the property line and it would get a variance for that.
Uh, the side of it would be, you possibly need a side yard variance, side yard setback variance, but those aren't as uncommon here.
Okay.
So if you're amenable to that, Mr. Gertner, what's the procedure to follow here under the circumstance?
Well, it appears that the applicant has asked for the board to carry the matter since it, it also appears that he's going to be doing his own measurements. I would presume he could do them in two weeks to just verify this and maybe have an, an estimate as to what, how many, if any, trees would have to come down. So with that, if the applicant's amenable, this, I don't have the next date in front of me, but this matter
April 7th.
may be carried to the April 7, 2021 meeting of the Board of Adjustment without the need for further notice. The public is directed to the municipal website and municipal publishing and posting newspapers for the ability to participate. And that the applicant, the applicant waives any time requirements.
So in terms
Which he's nodding his head, yes.
Okay. There's no necess, it's not necessary then to open this up to the public at this point, it is not, okay?
Through the chair.
Yeah.
I just have a question. So Evan, everything that you just I, I just wanted to be sure that everything that Evan just said would still hold true. Because isn't this a corner lot, so he has like two front yards? So that will
The fronts are along the roadway frontages. So he's moving it further away behind the house, therefore he's not in the front yard anymore.
So, Mr. Mayor, I, I would suggest too that presuming you go and verify that you can move this here, you should also take another copy of whatever survey or plot plan that you have and at least try to sketch out exactly where you perceive this detached structure garage is going to be.
Okay.
No, that's okay. And I'm sure Mr. Puporo or Mr. Hill can assist if you have any questions after you look. All right, so we'll see you on April 7th.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Just let, let the, Mr. Puporo know as soon as you have information so we can get it to the board so everybody's prepared.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Since Mr. Costanzo is, 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 is here, we have a full board. Are we still going to stay with the flip? We're still staying with the flip, okay. So then Clayton Sand, variance 3344. Good evening, Mr. Alfieri.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Salvatore Alfieri on behalf of the applicant. This is a unique application in that the applicant is seeking to install a solar array on a body of water in their property. We have, and it requires a D1 variance because the solar array like this is not permitted in the zone. We have a engineer, Jason Wirt, who was here virtually because of a medical issue. And then we also have our planner, Christine Caphone, who is present. And we have seven members, right?
We now have seven, yes.
Good. So Mr. Wirt, or can you, Mr. Wirt, can you hear me? Oh, sorry. Jason?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Can't see you.
All right, good evening.
Can't see him. Hang on, hang on.
Do you have a camera in front of you?
I do, it is, they just loaded me up here.
All right. There we go.
Good evening, everyone.
All right, you're, you're raising your right hand. You solemnly swear affirm that the information, questions, comments, and testimony around present before the board will represent the truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Can you kindly give us your full name, spell your last and your affiliation? And the chairman will ordere you slightly with regard to your qualifications.
Thank you, my name is Jason David Wirt, W E R T. I'm National Practice Leader for RETTEW, R E T T E W. And I represent as the engineer for the Clayton Sand project.
Mr. Alfieri, if you're gonna foredo your
Yes, Mr. Wirt, can you, um, you're a licensed professional engineer, is that correct?
That is correct.
You place in a little more detail your, your credentials so that we can establish you as an expert, please?
Sure, I have, uh, over 25 years' experience in heavy civil construction projects, including renewable energy. Um, I'm a licensed professional engineer in 15 states and have completed the nation's largest project similar to this, uh, this one as well.
Your qualifications are accepted. You're testifying as a licensed engineer this evening?
That's correct.
Thank you, Mr. Alfieri.
Okay, Mr. Wirt, uh, would you describe for the board, uh, what the applicant is seeking the board to act on tonight? Specifically the solar array?
Yes, this is a floating solar array to be constructed at their existing quarry to provide power for the quarry operations. Uh, the power produced would only be used onsite for the purposes of the, the mining operations that take place at the quarry. Um, it uses, uh, a system that has been successfully deployed around the world and here in New Jersey uh, for supporting the floating solar, for supporting the solar panels on a body of water. Um, they selected the body of water, um, because, um, they have some land limitations, uh, from use on the site. And, uh, the body of water, um, provides an excellent, uh, location to provide, uh, for the solar array.
The, um, does the solar array produce any glare or other, any other impact that might, um, affect adjacent properties or in the general public?
It does not, um, we did conduct a glare study to verify, uh, for both the FAA and others to make sure that the, the system does not glare. However, modern solar panels, um, glare represents sunlight that, that's effectively escaping the panel, being reflected. And so most solar panels designed today are, are enabled to collect as much solar energy as possible until glare is minimized.
And, um, how, how high off of the ground or the water would the array extend?
So the array is only several inches above the surface of the water. Um, the float itself, um, only rests, uh, generally about four to six inches above the water surface. And then the panel is located above that. So at maximum height, the top of the pa, the, the highest most point on the panel is generally only about two to two and a half feet off the surface of the water.
The, um, is there any screening or landscaping that's proposed i- in this area to, to buffer the array if, if? And if not, do you believe it's not necessary?
Yeah, there is none proposed because of the sightlines to this location in the quarry are very limited. Um, the array itself, uh, tends to blend into the water surface, uh, because of the, the nature and color of the panels in the water. But, but there is not really direct sightlines, uh, into the quarry, uh, operations, uh, where this will be located.
There, there's a reference in, um, one of the reports about the fact that the array and this body of water actually extends over two separate lots that are owned by two separate companies. But the two companies are affiliated, and if any easements or anything are required by the board, um, they are servicing the same general common ownership. There's also, uh, Mr. Wirt, you, you, I think you had an opportunity to review, uh, the engineer's report, Mr. Hill's report. And there, there are several technical
I did.
Contain within the report. The first deals with the JCP and L right-of-way easement. That's comment number two on the plan, on the report. Can you comment on that, please?
Yes, um, the, the facilities are located within those areas. However, we have been coordinating with JCP and L for the interconnection and have actually approved, received approval from JCP and L. Um, we can clarify on the plans, um, those, those areas, but, but, uh, we, we have received, uh, JCP and L approval for this location.
His next comment discusses contractor parking and staging areas for parking. Um, that's a comment number three. And, um, and suggests that, um, the plan should include, include a note that any disturbed areas will be restored. Um, so first, can you comment on the parking location? And then, of course, we would agree to provide the note for restoration.
Yes, certainly, um, there, there is not a large workforce that's associated with these type of projects. Um, so we generally would have, um, I think at most onsite, about 20 people working. Um, there is sufficient areas within the property. Uh, most of the time I'd say we have a smaller workforce, uh, in general. But, um, there is room within the property for us to park solely within these areas. And, and, uh, we, we so need, no need for any offsite parking or along the street parking or anything of those natures.
His next question relates to a concrete transfer, transformer pad and leak protection measures?
So we did provide the transformers and their nature to JCP and L for approval as part of the interconnection. Um, we do not have spill protection incorporated within, uh, the transformer system. Because of the location and proximity to water, um, we utilize mineral oils and, um, what I would say FDA-approved oils uh, for these locations, because there's, you know, a risk obviously with a water body. So, um, these are non-hazardous oils associated with the transformer.
What about, uh, the NJDP flood hazard area comment? Is there a requirement for any NJDP review, and if so, what's the status of that?
Yeah, so, um, when we originally submitted the plans, that was still pending. Um, however, the New Jersey DEP has, has reviewed the application and associated in environmental, um, clearances such as threatened endangered species. Ultimately, the New Jersey DEP concluded that they, uh, had no need for jurisdiction and did not have jurisdiction over this proposed use and declined, uh, to regulate the, the project.
Is there some writing that indicates that that's the position they've taken?
Yes, we have written correspondence from the NJDP that we can provide.
You would agree to provide that to the board?
Absolutely.
Uh, there are several other technical comments contained within Mr. Hill's report that I don't need you to testify to specifically unless the board does. But you would agree to address the balance of those technical comments in the report?
Absolutely, yes.
I'm sorry, then, it, what's standard for all of these solar, um, facilities is, is a decommissioning plan? For when, if and when these are decommissioned and how they will be? And I believe Mr. Er, Mr. Peters references it, a section in the ordinance that requires a decommissioning plan. The applicant would agree to provide, uh, and comply with that plan, is that correct?
That is correct.
And can you, for the board's education, could you describe generally how that works?
Uh, currently, um, the state of the art with, uh, solar arrays is, um, will we be receiving a long-term warranty for these systems? Um, generally speaking, 25 years or more for the panels. And at the end of that 25-year period, the panels are guaranteed to have about 85% of their life left. Um, so these are obviously long-term operations and long-term investments. Currently today, when decommissioned, the panels are actually saved and then, uh, transported to other projects or other locales, um, or overseas as an example. Uh, the remainder of this, which is HDPE floats that support, uh, the solar panels on the water, um, those materials could be recycled.
And, and can you, last question I have is, uh, the array itself, how is, does it float on the water and remain in this, this set location? Or is there something that ties it so it stays steady in one location?
Yeah, we, we do, um, because of the nature of water and, uh, to prevent failures, repetitive failures, we do allow the array to move slightly. Um, it's not rigidly in place with on the water surface. Uh, if you were to take a boat by it, it would ripple with the wake. Um, so the array has the ability to move a little bit, and I would say a little bit is five to eight feet in any given direction. Uh, during, during wind, the, you know, wind, et cetera. Um, there are anchoring tethering systems, uh, some of those will be attached to the bottom of the reservoir. And some of those will be attached to shore that have cable systems that, that keep the array from floating too far out of alignment. Um, those cabling and array systems are designed to meet the wind loading and code. So, um, these are, you know, superstorm sandy level, uh, capabilities on these cabling systems, uh, to remain in place. But it does move slightly, uh, from a distance, it would be difficult to see the, the movement, but it, it does move a little bit.
Thank you, that's all I have of Mr. Wirt, uh, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Matt Laney, go ahead, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Wirt, how many panels in total will be installed?
Slightly over 8,000, I believe the number is about 8,009 or somewhere around there.
Through the chair.
Uh, I'd just like to have some, uh, testimony as to the, the maintenance required with this type of system, loading system.
That's a great question, um, this type of system, we would generally maintain yearly. Um, the electronics, the, the conversion from elec, from the DC energy that the sunlight provides to the alternating current we use on our properties, et cetera, um, that's actually all located on shore. Um, so the maintenance on those is consistent with electrical equipment, sort of in any, any location. Um, a lot of the maintenance, we attempt to do by drone, uh, to minimize the amount of time that people spend on the water. You can walk on the array, there are walkways between the panels that allow you to access and do maintenance, uh, on it. Um, but generally, we do an annual inspection by drone. Uh, and then if there are problems detected, et cetera, uh, then someone would go out with a boat, two people in life jackets, uh, that kind of thing. But yearly maintenance would be the way to describe it.
And that also pertains to the floating system itself?
That is correct, um, the floating systems, uh, have a, have a good, long track record. Uh, there's about 130 of these systems worldwide. Uh, we're approaching about 10 of these systems in the United States. Uh, the largest in the nation is currently located in Sayerville. Um, and those float systems, um, do require some minor maintenance, checking of pins, um, you know, nuts are tight, those sorts of things. Again, that would be done as part of an annual inspection.
Last, I don't know if you can comment on it, the efficiency of the panels themselves? Are they, is the efficiency of the panel decreased based on the fact that they're on a floating system? Right, as opposed
So actually, yeah, that's a good, great question. Um, we actually see a slight efficiency gain by being located on the water. Um, that is for two reasons. Um, one, we do get some more reflected light, um, that is gathered by the system off the water body surfaces. Um, the second is by being in proximity to the water, the panels stay cooler. And in peak sunlight hours, uh, like say July 4th, um, at noon on July 4th, the, the panels will stop producing extra power due to high temperatures. Uh, the water keeps them a slight bit cooler. Uh, we've had the system in Sayerville in operation for about 20 months, 18 months. And we've seen, um, a slight increase, uh, three to 4% over, in certain conditions over what we would have expected.
If I may, Mr. Chair, I'm, I'm sorry, Ford. Um, uh, concern about wildlife, concerned about wildlife per se, but I am saying it. Um, the, the, um, turtles, snakes, et cetera, that are, are common to the waterways. Um, they're obviously going to be attracted to this for nesting ducks, wildlife, you know, a fowl, all of that. How is that, uh, addressed?
Addressed it through several ways. Now, I would say, um, the water quality at, at this location is a little bit unique. And there is, uh, a significantly reduced populations present, uh, because of the nature of the mine activities. Uh, however, what I'll, what I'll comment is, we use a couple techniques, uh, to prevent, um, wildlife interactions on the systems. Uh, so as an example, for ducks, pudlers, um, turtles, et cetera, we run some monofilament fishing line, almost like a little bit of a picket fence around the exterior of the system. They don't like to brush against that, and it's been extremely effective at keeping, uh, ducks or the like off of the, off of the unit. Uh, geese will use, um, in some areas, if the geese are very prevalent, we'll use an infrared laser system that, that prevents them from being in place. Uh, we actually are not proposing that for this location, uh, given that the number of geese, uh, is very minimal, uh, on this water surface. Um, there are some species we're not able to prevent from actually getting to the system. Uh, egrats, those type of things, um, they'll walk on the walkways, they haven't nested. Um, but, um, they, they, there's not many ways to defeat them from, from being there.
Thank you. Yes.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Wirt, uh, this is actually a follow-up to Mr. Costanza's question. Is there any, um, danger of something in this system failing that might contaminate the water? You know, following up on the wildlife, um, issue?
There's nothing out on the water surface, um, that, that has any risk associated with that. Uh, these panels are fully encapsulated in glass. Um, and all of the components that are out on the water body are either HDPE, like, um, you know, for boat docks, et cetera, along those lines. Um, we do use marine-grade cable, uh, for the electrical cable. So it's a, it's a highly insulated form of cable, uh, that, that goes from the array to shore. Um, after that, it's just electronic components on shore. Um, so, you know, from a, from a hazardous materials or toxic material standpoint, we won't have any of those components, uh, during construction or, or actually, uh, permanently on site.
Thank you.
Uh, so
I don't know if this is appropriate for the witness, maybe possibly the, the attorney. Are there any title issues here, T I T L A, riparian rights, things of that nature?
No, none that, um, none that have come up. And I don't know if any separate searches were done, but no, it's an isolated body of water.
Body of water is not titled, T I D A O.
No.
So, uh, in following up with these type of solar panel that you're proposing, what type of panel are you proposing?
Um, so these are a 410 watt panel. Um, that is not the largest panel that is made on the market. But, um, it's consistent with the larger panels that we can get that are not subject to excessive tariffs within this country. Um, so it, it, it's a state of the art, it, it's, uh, these are panels, uh, produced in Vietnam and have a very high efficiency.
I'm saying the type, if it's not, are they thin film, are they poly, polysilicon?
Oh, 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 sorry, they're polysilicon, yes, the polysilicon monofacial panels.
And the, and, and for the, for the board's knowledge, polysilicon panels don't have any liquids in them of any sort. They're fully encapsulated silicone panels, correct?
That is correct.
Just to follow up to that, um, so, but in the event that one of those panels broke, the glass broke, would then something leach into the water? Is there anything in there that even if it breaks, would contaminate the
Uh, the short answer there is no. Uh, these are all solids, they're not soluble materials. Uh, and these types of panels, while they have heavy, small amounts of heavy metals and so much in them, they're encapsulated. Uh, they don't become airborne, they don't become, uh, they don't become soluble in water.
Through the chair. Yes. So let's say there's a storm and the water starts engulfing it and it starts shaking more than eight to 10 feet. You were saying they could break. And would you be able to detect leakage, electrical leakage?
Well, so, uh, the system is fully grounded. So in the event that there was a cable that broke, et cetera, that exposed electrical current to the water, um, it, there would be an instant thing to shut down on all the systems, because we fully ground all the way to shore. Um, so these, these systems are extremely well protected in that li, in that standpoint. Uh, the biggest risk, I suppose, would be, would be a lightning strike that actually struck, uh, the unit. But again, those lightning protection systems, transient voltage surge suppression, as it's known, is all contained within, within the system. Um, so when I say normal motion, uh, you know, of eight to 10 feet or five to eight feet, that, that is what I will consider daily. Um, the anchoring system is, is designed to restrain, you know, winds in excess of 100 miles an hour. hour and, and keep the system in place during those, those wind events.
Thank you. I got one more to get on to that. On the amount of electricity that you're taking from the sun, where are you putting the extra amount? Is it going back to JPNL? You're taking too much excess, where does it go?
So, so this is known as net metering under, under both state law and JCPN regulations. So generally speaking, the, what the electricity is first consumed on the property. If there would be excess electricity to give an instantaneous moment, there'll be a bidirectional meter, a two-way meter that JCPN installs as part of the project. And so they measure how much we sent out to the grid, and then consistent with state law, they have to credit us back that amount immediately. So as an example, if we overproduce during the day, they would give us credit for that at night during operations.
Reason why I brought that up is that I was in the emergency room at a hospital, and JPNL didn't tell, we didn't know that there was electricity that's being fed back from these panels, and he got electrocuted, and it was supposed to be shut off at the time. That's why I'm bringing it up. The man that went up the pole.
Yes, Mr. Earl.
When you first started your testimony, you indicated that the, the solar panels would be utilized to support the operation for the quarry. What exactly is the operation at the quarry?
So this facility primarily produces sand for concrete and other uses throughout the area.
So it's mining of the sand?
That's correct.
What happens when the bottom ends? What do you do with the panels? What's, what's the expected life of, of the, of the mining operation? Do you have any idea?
So, yeah, I, I guess I'd say the applicant is here if we want to do, but, but in excess of the, in excess of the useful life of, of the solar array would be my answer.
And we have representatives from Clayton here. If we could bring him up next, and he could respond to that.
Mr. Hill?
Yes. While, while we're on this, so, so since this is a net meter project, building permits are going to be required from the township of Jackson, from both a structural review and an electrical review, and possibly footings and foundations for your transformer pads as well. Can you, can you explain to the board what standards are typically followed from an electrical and structural perspective when you design these systems?
Sure. I mean, there's a whole bevy of codes that are applicable to this type of construction. And, and our, our design is fully complete and, and ready for building permit submissions once we, we move through this part of the regulatory process. But, so as an example, concrete would be consistent with the International Building Code and ASCC seven for building loads, ASC ten. The electrical would be consistent with National Electric Code and the IBC, International Building Code, along with JCPNL's individual requirements for both net metering and their safety and requirements. You mentioned the case of electrical flowing back, but these are IEEE 1547 inverters requiring us to instantaneously shut electricity off in case the grid loses power. So this is sophisticated, modern, photovoltaic solar system. And so all of those codes, we would have compliance and checks with throughout the design process, and then through documentation to the building process.
Mr. Alfieri, in the package, there were some pictures?
Yes.
These, these are not the pictures of the, of the panels that are there because the panels haven't been installed yet, so this must be from some other location?
Yes, Mr. Wirt, can, the pictures that were submitted in support of the application, could you tell the board where they were, where they were taken from, and if they are typical of what's going to be proposed here?
Yes. So those pictures are taken from the borough of Sayerville, located the Perth Amboy Middlesex County area. The, the water treatment plant for the borough of Sayerville receives electricity from a floating solar array. That particular array is a little bit bigger than what is proposed for the Clayton. It's about 50% larger than the Clayton project. But that project provides power. Thank you, that's great. Yeah, this project provides power to the borough's water treatment plant, along with City Hall, Public Works Building, Fire Station, and a number of other subsidiary accounts in Sayerville. This is very typical for the floating system. The one that will be installed at Clayton will look identical. Panels, floating racking, everything that you see here is effectively going to be the same for the Clayton project.
Through the chair.
Yes.
A follow-up question, if I may. Do you know how long this facility in Sayerville has been in, in operation?
I, I do. I mean, we, we did this system. We, we, we performed all our sort of aspects on the project. This system went into operation in September of 2019. It was constructed from around Labor Day of, of 2018 through March of 2019. And then there was a series of testings that were done. Because this was unique, the first one in New Jersey, there was a fair amount of scrutiny. This one did have NJDEP permitting and the like, so a more complex project than we're dealing with here tonight. But it's been in, it's been in successful operation for about, about 18 months.
Thank you. And one, I'm sorry, Chair, one question. With regards to the water, the water quality itself, is there testing of the water to see if the oxygen levels and algae, et cetera, are affected by this covering of the waters?
Yeah, there, there has been a lot of interest worldwide in this. The European Union, as an example, has standards for floating solar and what chemically they have to do and what their impact has been to water bodies. The system we're using is actually a French system that comes out of those programs that's being exported here to the United States. So generally, they have found an improvement of water quality and a reduction in algae because we're absorbing sunlight from, that would normally be reaching the water. I will say that the benefit is minimal. New Jersey prefers that we don't cover more than 25%, 25 to 35% of the water surface. So since you're only covering a portion of the water body, the benefits by nature will be limited.
If we can stay with that a little bit, Mr. Wirt, but only bring it home now to this project. I, I'd like to know what the current bodies of water are, are used for now at the site. And I'd like to know if, if he, I think Mr. Wirt was just saying 25 to 35% of the surface area was the recommended amount. Is that the percentage that's being proposed here on this site? So I'd like.
No, no, we're actually, we're actually well below that. So I.
And I'm sorry.
Yeah. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
You, you were going to address the percentage of the area of the lake or body of water that is going to be covered by the solar panels at this site, and I cut you off. I'm sorry, would you address that again?
Sure. We're well below the recommended 25%. I would have to double-check the exact number, but I believe we're below 10%. Sticks in my recollection, we're seven to eight percent or something along those lines.
And, and then if you can, if you know, can you address what the current body of water is, is used for? What's the purpose of that water? Is it used recreational, recreationally, are there boats, are there swimmers, et cetera?
No, it could, when the Clayton representative, that'd probably be better for him.
And may I follow up, Mr. Chairman? When the Clayton representative comes up, he may want to testify to just briefly the origin and hydrology of this particular, because it is man-made, man-made. Being an old piney a little bit myself, I'm assuming it was dug out as they were digging the sand. But they'll, they'll know better than, than I.
And, and Mr. Wirt, you may have answered this, and I just may not have picked up on it, but I want to make an assumption that let's say Clayton no longer has use for the, the electricity that's generated by the panels. What then becomes of that electricity or of the panels?
So, so I, to, to answer directly, under the current approvals for the system and under current state law, if the, if the Clayton's would cease operation at this facility, then the solar system would cease operation as well. It's not approved for wholesale electrical resale to the market.
All right, well, take it to the next step. If it ceases operation, does that mean that all of those panels would have to be deconstructed and removed?
That's correct.
Yeah, and that's that decommissioning plan that we discussed earlier, they have to decommission the system.
That's what he was referring to?
Yes.
Thank you. Wirt, members, any other questions of Mr. Wirt? Professionals, any questions or concerns of Mr. Wirt? No? Mr. Alfieri?
Who's coming? You?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wirt.
Okay.
Mr. Mills, you raise your right hand. You solemnly swear affirm the information, testimony, questions or comments you're about to present before the board represent the truth, hold truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Can you kindly give us your full name, your affiliation, and I, I guess the manner in which you're speaking before the board?
Certainly.
As an expert or as a fact witness?
Certainly. My name is Gordon Milnes, M-I-L-N-E-S. I'm an employee of the Clayton Companies. I'm the Director of Engineering and Planning. I'm also an engineer and a planner in the state of New Jersey. I believe I'm testifying tonight more as a fact witness to, to explain the operation, operations at the site. So some good questions. The site has been in, in the manufacture of construction sands for many decades. So what we do and how, how we mine the property is, first of all, if it's above grade and much of the ground that we have permitted for mining is still above grade, you can drive out there, that would be excavated with typical construction equipment that can run on wheels or cats' tracks and things like that. And then ultimately, by large hydraulic backhoes to get below a water surface, and the water surface is groundwater. Once we get down to groundwater, we are able to float a dredge, which is a boat, which has on it a, a long pipe which is angled down to, down into the water to the subsurface level, and there's a cutter head on it, and there's a pump, and it sucks the sand through the dredge, through a floating pipe, back to a land-based processing plant. The processing plant then separates the grain sizes into different types of construction sand. And then the conveyance is, since it's by pump, and it's, since it's coming from the, the lake, it's got a high percentage of water. So the water in the lake goes through the system and just returns back to the lake. We don't do anything, we don't treat the water, it's just a way to convey the coarse materials back to the plant for separation, where they're sorted by grain size and ultimately loaded onto trucks, which then go over scales and go out to our customers, of which we are probably the primary customer ourselves. So, so that's how the lake was created, and it, it moves rather slowly. You don't see a lot of change to the lake because of the depth we're allowed to dig to. And that, that depth is by our permit, both issued by the Pine Lands Commission and by the, the Jackson Township, is 65 feet. So, so as we move the dredge, we take the material down to that depth, and we don't go any further than that. And to answer your question about what happens if, if the bottom changes, and what does that do to the panels? The reason we pick this location for the panels is we're essentially done with the mining in that area. We're already at depth, we don't anticipate going back into that area. It's also in a location that is close to the electrical facilities on site. And it's also in an area where future dredging will not impact panels because we do move the dredge around in the large lake, and behind that dredge is this floating pipe. And because it's loc, because the panels be located in this lower portion of the lake, lower meaning closer to Tom's River Road, there will, will be no conflict with the two uses.
The, what percentage of the lake will be impacted or covered by the panels?
Very, very small. Clearly less than 10%, probably closer to 5%.
And, and the, the electrical need of the facility, you mentioned the plant, and what else is there that gen, that has electrical need?
So the dredge itself is electric, so that, that motor that's on the dredge, that will be taking power from our electrical system, which will be supported by the, the panels. And then also the, the land-based plant, which separates the sand and materials and does a lot of the hard work of, of sorting that out, returning the water back to the lake.
Additional questions?
Mr. Mills, in terms of, in terms of the lake, it's been drenched to depth at 65 feet. If there were no solar panels to be placed on it, what does Clayton do with that lake, if anything?
Sure, good question. So we have, we have to restore the area that we, we are working in. Restoration can consist either of the lake itself, we're not proposing to fill the lake back in, for example. The lake will be a lake. The areas that are disturbed outside of the actual lake are all required to be restored with vegetated cover, as stipulated by the Pine Lands Commission, and also by, by the township. So that does go to the questions of your engineer, I mean, about landscaping. Ultimately, the areas that are remaining and above water will be landscaped.
All right. I, I don't know much, if anything, about lakes, but I know if, if water stands stagnant for a long period of time, if there's no refreshing or if there's no reoxygenation, you end up with, with a, with a terribly polluted or acidic or just, just a terrible body of water. I'm wondering, one, if without the panels, that's a concern, and does Clayton do anything to prevent that from occurring? And then with the panels, does that modify what has to be done in order to keep the lake fresh, for, for lack of a better word, if that makes any sense to you?
Sure. Good question again, and really, I think the primary reason we don't have any stagnation issues is because of the volume of water in, in the pond. If you were to go out and look at the ponds, or if you were to look on Google Earth, or, you would see that the ponds are, are really a bright blue. They're not, they have no stagnation associated with them at all. There's lo, large surface area available for, for natural aeration. And because the panels are such a small portion of coverage of the lake, there should be zero impact for that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Through the chair.
Yes.
You're saying that there's no fish in this lake?
There's no fish in this lake, and I'm glad you brought that up. One of the natural qualities of groundwater in the Pine Lands area is a high acidity, and that's the reason why we don't have a population in, in the lake itself.
Now, you were drilling for sand when you actually hit the water, and there was a well that filled this up to a lake, right?
No, sir. So there's natural groundwater everywhere. There's a depth of groundwater below your house and mine, and that's the level of the groundwater in this particular area. So we're blessed with trillions of gallons of groundwater in New Jersey, particularly in the Pine Lands area. So this just simply goes down to the natural groundwater level. It's a static level. It's a level of water where people who have potable water wells, they'll draw water from that source. But it's there, and it's at the level of our lake, and we just dig below it, and it, it stays that level.
So this has reached its maximum, you're at 65 feet?
Mm-hmm. That's our current permit, is 65 feet, correct?
May I ask, just to follow up on that, and if I'm using the wrong terms, I apologize. At 65 feet, do you hit water such that there's a spring, as an example, that also feeds it?
No, no. The geology of the area really kind of dictates what depth we request permission to excavate to. The type of materials that are used for all of our construction projects are best found in these upper layers. So, while we could potentially go down deeper at the current time, you know, we're only going down to the 65 feet, and there's other limitations too, limitations on the equipment. So, you know, we are looking at, you know, future areas based on geology that we might actually go down a little deeper, but we don't have those approvals at the current time. But there are no, there's no geyser that's going to come out. You know, we've been doing this. In fact, our predecessors here from many decades ago have been doing it, and it's common to the area. There are other mines like this. We operate one in Woodmanse, very similar, and nothing of that sort.
So, again, to use a language that some members of the board may know, and again, if I'm using it incorrectly, it's probably folks understand in this town, right, about a perk, where a property can you relate it to putting a septic system in and what the perk is and stuff like that? Maybe that'll help.
Yeah, well, I mean, a septic
If there is a relation.
So, the relationship is that when you put a septic system in, it needs to be above the groundwater. So, and there's a minimum distance between the bottom of a septic system and groundwater elevation. And a septic system designer has to do some testing to find out where that is. And it's as little as two feet, and bottom of a septic system can be within two feet of groundwater, seasonal high groundwater. So, so there are different things. A septic system lives above the groundwater. And, you know, that determination of groundwater is done through testing, groundwater depth.
Where's the groundwater depth here? Is it below 65 feet?
No, it's actually at the, very close to the surface. So, the 65 feet is from the water surface to the bottom of the water. So, that's the, that's the depth of the water in the pond.
Another question. What is the acidity? You mentioned acidity. What is the acidity of this water?
The acidity of this water can be down as low as, so acidity is measured, the pH of the water.
Yes.
Seven is determined to be like the neutral. High acidity is low pH. And so, the pH, that's typical to this area is around four. So, it's pretty acidic. I mean, for natural groundwater condition, it all has to do with the natural coverage, you know, the pine-type vegetation that's been in this area for eons. So, natural, natural situation.
A lake this size would breed mosquitoes. That's why I always add fish to my ponds and stuff. So, that's my concern about the safety, about breeding mosquitoes and not being controlled.
We don't, we don't have, have never had a mosquito issue that I'm aware of. Usually, that takes place in shallow, it can happen in a bucket, you know, it can happen in shallow stagnant water, which is what we've been kind of talking about.
Chairman was talking about stagnant water.
Right, that's right.
That's why I'm bringing this up.
But we, these are, these are deep ponds. This is a lot of water, and it's not, the habitat isn't there for mosquito breeding.
Any further, Mr. Hurley?
I don't know if this was, a question was brought up before, but have you, do you perform any tests for contaminants? I know the pictures that they gave were Sayerville. I think they may have had some problems with contaminants up there when they started dredging, because I think the DuPont plants were up there, one of them was. But do you test for any contaminants, and do you have any process that you utilize for that purpose, for making such tests? Have you encountered any contaminants?
Well, happy to say we haven't encountered any contaminants in the pond. We do test periodically for certain parameters, pH, one of them. But oils and, sometimes, what is it? Chemical oxygen demand, biological oxygen demand, but, you know, those things are within parameters.
No heavy metals of that type, anything of that nature?
No.
Board members, any other questions of Mr. Milne? Professionals, any questions of Mr. Milne? Nothing? Thank you, Mr. Hurley.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Christine, last, you want to use this or that?
Ms. Cofone, you're raising your right hand. You solemnly swear affirm that the information, questions, comments, and testimony you're about to present before the board shall represent the truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Yes, I do.
Can you give us your full name, please, about your last, your affiliation, and, Mr. Alfieri, some expertise on the record, please?
Yes, of course. Good evening. Christine Nazaro-Cofone, it's C-O-F-O-N-E. Business address is 125 Half Mile Road, Suite 200, Red Bank, New Jersey. I am testifying as a professional planner. I've been practicing as a licensed professional planner for 25 years in the state of New Jersey. Although it's been a minute, I've been qualified here in Jackson in excess of over 400 planning and zoning boards throughout the state of New Jersey. I teach planning and zoning courses for the Rutgers Center for Government Services. I'm also an Affordable Housing Special Master in about 30 different municipalities.
That's your expertise. Your qualifications are accepted. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Cofone, you know, you understand that we're seeking D1 variance relief, and would you place your, the proofs on the record to support the relief?
Yes, certainly. The use that we're proposing is not a permitted use in the RD9 zone, so we are seeking a D1 use variance. As identified in your professionals' December 16th, 2020 review letter, that D variance requires a certain burden of proof, if you will, for the grant of a variance. However, unlike some variances that you hear for a use variance or a D variance, where the applicant establishes positive criteria as well as particular suitability, in my professional opinion, this use is an inherently beneficial use. In 2009, there was a legislative decision that renewable energy sources, specifically including solar facilities, would be considered inherently beneficial uses. So, with that being said, we still require the D variance relief, but as an inherently beneficial use, we presumptively satisfy the positive criteria as well as particular suitability, and we're subject to the CECA balancing test. So, what the CECA balancing test requires us to do is to identify the public interest at stake. And while we don't need to establish the positive criteria, I certainly, we can, I think we could be guided by the fact that this is an inherently beneficial use. And one of the stated purposes of the municipal land use law at 40,55D-2 subsection N, or letter N, is promoting of renewable energy sources. So, I certainly think that there is a public interest in providing for these type of facilities. The next prong of the CECA balancing test is to look at any reasonable conditions that can be imposed on the application to mitigate any impacts. And I think you've heard a willingness, of course, we will do the required decommissioning plan, and certainly, we will modify the plans to meet the requirements of your professionals. So, I think we can certainly accommodate that as reasonable conditions. And then to have a balancing act of the positive and negative criteria and weigh really the negative criteria. So, when you're looking at the negative criteria, it doesn't so much matter if you're an inherently beneficial use or not. You still have to be subjected to both prongs, the negative criteria. And this is a very large site. It's 750 plus or minus acres. So, I think that there are certainly, when you look at the negative criteria, the negative criteria does not ask you to hold us or any other applicant to a burden of proof that there be no detriment, just that the benefits of the grant of the variance outweigh any detriment. But because this site is of such a site, such a substantial size, and, you know, obviously, one of the things, and your professionals raised the issue of noise, glare, and that points to, from a planning point of view, visibility. So, we worked with our team to look at the distances to any adjoining residential properties. And I can tell the board that the closest residential property is just under 1,000 feet from this, from this field. So, I really see no, just a lack of substantial detriments here and a lack of negative impacts. When you look at, this is really, in my opinion, even though we don't have to establish particular suitability, I do think, given the fact that this is a 750-acre site with 946 feet to our closest residential neighbor, the board can certainly be comfortable that there's going to be no substantial detriment if you were to move favorably on this variance. Lastly, I think when I looked at the master plan, one of the goals in the land use plan was to achieve a pattern and mix of land uses that achieves various community planning objectives, including the provision of quality neighborhoods and the protection of natural resources. So, I think certainly that having the renewable energy does do that. And I can say that in my professional planning opinion, I think that we meet our statutory burden of proof for the grant of the D variance required in conjunction with this application, and that there's no substantial detriment to the public good or the zone plan here if the board were to move favorably on the application.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Board members, any question to Ms. Cofone?
Ms. Cofone, just one question. If you can opine on 4055D4 talks about this as well, that these energy facilities are inherently beneficial. Do you have any opinion as to whether or not it's beneficial because it only, only because it serves the particular site? In other words, to ask the question in the other way, does need to, in order for the use to be beneficial, does it have to use, does it have to benefit other than the site itself?
No, I think as long as it's allowing some entity to rely on renewable energy, then I think you're meeting the spirit and intent of the statute. The statute do not require that there be an overall global benefit of it, just that there be some reliance on the renewable energy. And I think you're clearly, you heard from the applicant, that there clearly will be a reliance, and this is, this is a large user. So, I'm comfortable from a planning point of view that this is clearly an inherently beneficial use, as there will be reliance on the renewable energy. And I don't think that there's any requirement that it be for an overall public benefit.
Yes, Mr. Hurley.
Mr. Gardner, can you read the definition there for inherently beneficial use, or not that, the
Well, I
The system that you just mentioned?
Well, NJS 4055D4 specifically, this is from Cox at 32-5.2, so I'm cheating a little bit. But NJS 4055D4 specifically lists the following uses as inherently beneficial: hospital, school, childcare center, group home, or a wind, solar, or photovoltaic energy facility or structure.
Thank you.
I have a question for Mr. Peters. Mr. Peters, do you take any issue with Ms. Cofone's testimony, especially in regards to her conclusion and proposition that this is an inherently beneficial use?
Mr. Chairman, well, my long answer is, well, I certainly like having cerebral conversations about inherently beneficial uses with Ms. Cofone and Mr. Alfieri. The short answer to your question is no, I take no exception to the testimony that was given, and I take, and I would agree that this is in fact an inherently beneficial use.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Hurley.
Just for the sake of discussion, if, to make the record clear, if this were not found to be an inherently beneficial use, can you discuss the concept of the particular suitability and the reconciliation process that the board would have to go through relative to the grant of the variance and the absence of the provision in the ordinance?
Certainly. And you know, Mr. Hurley, I usually do that, but I was so confident in this one that it qualifies. But, so, if we weren't an inherently beneficial use, and we were just coming forth under the straight D1 use variance that you hear, then we would have to demonstrate to you that this site is particularly suitable for this proposed use. So, I think that we could certainly be concluded that the unique size of this property, together with the fact that we're so far from any adjoining residential neighbors, that gives us the opportunity to argue that this site is particularly suitable for this proposed use. Again, the site doesn't have to be uniquely suitable for this, and we don't have to rule out other locations to substantiate our particular suitability proofs, so I think we're definitely solid there. Then we would have to demonstrate that one or more purposes of the municipal land use law would be advanced by the grant of the variance. So, I think here we could look at Criteria A, which talks about promoting the general welfare. As we know, there will be an end user that will rely on the natural, the renewable energy. Also, Criteria N of the land use law, which specifically talks about renewable energy sources. But then I think we could also consider Criteria G. And Criteria G talks about providing for sufficient space in a variety, for a variety of uses in a variety of locations. So, I think that we could be guided by that here as well, as there is sufficient space. But then, as a non-inherently beneficial use, we would be guided, and I'm sure you've heard the Medici, the reconciliation of the omission of this use from the zone plan. And I think certainly, this site is distinguishable from other RD9 residential zone properties. It's an existing, it's a very large site, so I think we would certainly be able to conclude that the governing body's omission would not be impacted here by having this facility at this location. So, even though I think we are all in agreement that we do have, that we do satisfy the inherently beneficial proofs, if we didn't, I'm comfortable from a planning point of view that I could put, offer that testimony as a non-inherently beneficial use, and we would also substantiate our burden of proof.
Thank you, Ms. Cofone.
You're welcome.
Board members, any further questions to Ms. Cofone? Professionals, any questions for Ms. Cofone? Nothing? Anything further, Mr. Alfieri?
That's all we have, Mr. Chair.
In that case, then this portion of the hearing is closed. I will open it to the public. All right, Anthony, let's see, what do we have? My, my screen says we have 14 participants. Anthony, does that look right to you? And I see one hand up. I don't know which that is, but I see one hand up.
Looks like Mr. Thomas Smith, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Smith, are you there?
Yes, the little man.
Oh.
Okay, it seems to kick me off and then let me back in once I've been connected. Are you able to hear me?
Yes, we can, but can you hang on one second? Paul, all right. If you would raise your right hand, please. You solemnly swear affirm that testimony, information, questions, or comments you're about to present to the board or to the applicant or its professional shall represent the truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
And you kindly give us your full name, spell your last, and your address, please.
Thomas Smith, S.M.I.T.H., 520 Whitesville Road in Jackson.
520 Whitesville Road, you said?
Whitesville, correct.
All right, thank you, Mr. Smith. Mr. Smith, do you have any specific question or comments regarding the application?
Yes, I do have a comment. It would seem to me that the solar array across the pond is, just one benefit is that it seemed to me infiltration and groundwater recharge fill that pond, and evaporation removes it, and that balance, when you cover it with solar panels and reduce the evaporation of the pond, you're actually slowing groundwater loss out of that surface. I'm sure an engineer could quantify that. I don't want to speak about it quantitatively, but it would seem to me that it's actually a benefit and that it reduces evaporative loss out of the pond.
All right, did I hear that right, that for whatever level of expertise or opinion you have, that it actually is a benefit?
Absolutely, yeah, absolutely. With all the infiltration basins that are, that are built for, you know, to avoid putting stormwater and precipitation into streams and recharging the groundwater, it would seem that that solar array actually reduces loss of groundwater out of that water body. So, it increases the groundwater storage for probably a whole area.
Thank you. Is there anything further that you'd like to comment on in this application or a question for anybody?
No, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you for your participation, Mr. Smith. I don't see any other hands up. Anthony, do you? All right, so it says participants 14, attendees nine. No other hands are up. No further comment then or questions from the public. I'll close the public portion. All right. Mr. Alfieri, any closing comments?
Just that, based upon the nature of this, and it's very unique, I'm sure none of the board members have seen anything like this. And in fact, as the engineer said, there's only one other facility like this in New Jersey. Based on the professional reports that were issued by the board's professionals and the fact that we've addressed all of their comments and agreed to address all of their comments, and then the professional testimony we submitted in support of the application, we feel we've met our burden to establish the right to have a D1 variance for this facility. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Alfieri. Board members, any comments, questions, deliberations, motion? Mr. Hurley?
I'm sorry, Mr. Hurley, I'm having a hard time hearing you.
Sorry, I should have put it on.
Thank you.
I'm making a motion that we, we grant this application for a number of reasons. If it is an inherently beneficial use, and I don't know that this board is willing to accept that or not, it may or may not. If it is, if it isn't, if it is not an inherently beneficial use, the positive criteria, negative criteria that have to be addressed by, by this applicant, I think has been satisfied. The positive criteria, there's no question in that it serves the general welfare there. And based on that, it supports a less of a drain on the electrical grid. And it is clear from what Mr. Gertner had read from the municipal land use law, paragraph four, or section four, that generally, these types of facilities are looked at as inherently beneficial. If it is inherently beneficial, the presumption is that the positive criteria has been satisfied. I know, as I've indicated, if we go beyond that and we just talk about not being inherently beneficial in case there is a problem with the application, some future date, that the positive criteria has been satisfied because it is in fact a, it serves a, a purpose enumerated by the municipal land use law. It serves the general public. As far as the site being particularly suitable, because the general welfare is in fact satisfied here, it's on water. It's essentially, it has no impact on drainage. I think it's clear from the testimony that's been presented that there is no negative impact on the wildlife. Obviously, DEP has addressed the issues in, in this regard. So there's no, no detriment in that regard. As far as the negative criteria to have to be resolved, this is already an existing quarry. So there's no negative impact on, on the plan itself, the development plan or zone plan itself. As far as the substantial impact on the neighborhood, I think Ms. Cofone has already represented that relative to the impact of the residential areas. The closest one is about 1,000 feet away. Again, this is a very passive type of use. There's no major, I can, from what I've gathered from the testimony, there's no major impact on noise or odor, anything of that nature. So there's no negative impact in that regard. If it is an inherently beneficial use, then the positive criteria has presumptively been satisfied. We can, we can do the, the CICA test, and we can balance the benefit against the negatives. I found the negatives are not substantial at all, and they, they satisfy and they well balance, the positive well balances against any negative that can exist. Based on that, whether it's an inherently beneficial use, I think the application has met, the applicant has met its burden. If it's not inherently benefits use, I still think the applicant has met its burden. And based on that, I would move that we just approve this application. One second.
You got a second? Roll call, please.
Mr. Costanzo?
Yes.
Ms. Fritch?
Yes.
Mr. Hurley?
Yes.
Ms. McElhany?
Yes.
Ms. Camello?
Yes.
Mr. Higarian?
Yes.
Mr. Book?
Yes. The application's approved. Thank you, Mr. Alfieri.
Thank you, members of the board.
Yes, before we begin the last application with board approval, we're taking a 15-minute break. It's 9 o'clock now, we'll be back at 9:15. All agree? Ayes.
Yes, I am here. It just kicked back in, actually. I think there's like a 30-second delay from your end to my end.
Okay, I think we have everybody here, Mr. Alfieri. I think we're ready to go. Are you ready to go?
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Salvatore Alfieri, on behalf of the applicant. This application was presented to you at an earlier meeting. A, a different law firm handled that application. Since that time, they had asked me to fill in and present it this evening, and I did send a letter to the board some time ago advising the board that we are, that my office is now representing the applicant. Mr. Borden presented testimony at the last hearing. Just for clarification purposes, have all seven board members either participated, were they at the last meeting and/or listened to the tape?
That I don't know. I was here, Mr. Hurley was here. Okay, everybody's nodding, so everybody's.
Okay, good, good. All right, so now we can keep going. So since the last meeting, Mr. Borden has made a, a submission to the board. He did, I believe, finish his planning testimony at the last meeting, but I'm going to ask him again tonight to, first of all, summarize what was presented since the last hearing, and then bring the board up to speed and maybe be a little bit repetitive just so that we don't lose sight of some of the issues. Mr., we don't need to re-swear him, I assume?
Well, we do.
We do? Okay.
So Mr. Borden, you raised your right hand. You raised your right hand. You solemnly swear affirm that testimony, information, questions, or comments you're about to present for the board will represent the truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth. Full name, spell your last, your affiliation, please. You've already been qualified.
Thank you. Ian Borden, President of Professional Design Services, Lakewood, New Jersey.
And, and Mr. Borden, you, you, you're still a professional planner. So would you, would you, first of all, I believe you submitted a letter to the board dated February 19th. Is that the only submission that was made to the board since the last hearing?
There was a follow-up email with some additional Open Public Records Act.
And that's the February 25th email?
That is correct.
Okay. First, let's start with the February 19th letter. Can you just summarize for the board what was presented and what the purpose of the, of the documentation that was presented serves?
Certainly. So at the March 3 hearing, I was given some homework to do on a number of different issues.
Today's March 3?
I'm sorry. Oh, that's because it says the previous hearing. I was given homework, some assignments to do some research on different items. So the purpose of the February 19 meeting was to summarize the results of, of that work. And I will briefly go over the seven items that were investigated. First one was to prepare a variance plan. We did submit a two-sheet variance plan, a cover sheet and variance plan, both dated February 16th of 2021. Number two was the question of any violations from NJDEP for the diesel mechanic use. Board will recall, it's the diesel mechanic use that is the source of the D.1 variance relief requested. We, I investigated the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection online data search engine and found, for the past 20 years, and found no files for the entire site. Thirdly, we were asked to refine and expand the statement of operations for the diesel mechanic use. We, in my opinion, substantially did that with the activities proposed in, in more detail as well as, as well as the hours of operation. And that, that was included with the letter. Fourth was the request to investigate the septic system. There is an existing septic system that services the site. Again, the site, the site has been in existence for 73 years, certainly. I'm sure the septic system has not, but we did an Oprah request, Open Public Records Act request to Ocean County Health Department, and they returned a repair to the septic disposal bed in 2007. And the, this existing septic has, continues to service the site. And, and number five, there was a question raised about the property assessment by Tom's River Township. There were questions, recall that the municipal boundary line bifurcates the building. I had testified that we were asking for the variances as if the entire building was in Jackson, just to be conservative. But the question was, how was it assessed? And review of the assessment data from both townships reveals that the, the building is, is assessed 100% to Jackson Township. There is no building assessment in, in Tom's River Township. They only assess the vacant property or the, yes, the undeveloped or the non-building portion of the land within Tom's River Township. The sixth one was the township boundary. Recall that there were questions raised. The survey map that was presented at the first hearing showed the survey line for the municipal boundary as approximate. So I discussed that with my in-house survey, surveyors, licensed land surveyors, and asked them to provide this language, which is what is written here. And basically, that while we, we did survey the municipal boundary line under the surveying regulations, that can only be, basically is required to be listed as approximate unless it's established by a township as a client and between the two townships. Well, since the townships are obviously not our clients, we, we did not do that, but however, the, the line has been accurately surveyed. So the approximate is, is not a label indicative of the accuracy, but one of the, the fact of whom we did the work for. And then lastly, I had testified about an existing use up the street, another diesel mechanic use. So we were asked to do an Oprah request for that, which, which we did, and we gave a copy of the files, which included the summary that's in the letter, the fact that in 1974, the site plan was approved for garage and office use by Jackson. In 1981, a site plan was approved for West Technology Enterprises. Irrelevant item, but, but it, it's in the records. 1997, the Pine Lands and Township issued complaints over a disturbance to the wetlands in the rear of the property. In 2003, a zoning permit was denied to operate the site for heavy equipment sales in the truck terminal. And then in 2011, there was, again, the violation following up on 1997 complaints over wetlands disturbance, and as well as the diesel repair business. Subsequently, the follow-up email, that, that Oprah response that I received and submitted was, was a comprehensive one, and, and I included it in its totality in this middle to the board. But on, on the 25th, I received another packet from the Oprah request, which contained much of the same paperwork when I compared the different correspondence. But there was one letter that wasn't in the earlier one, which I thought was important to bring to the attention of the board, which was a, a letter from 1992 from the zoning officer stating that the truck garage use is permitted. So I, I believe that was possibly important.
So let's go back now to the February 19 submission. The first document you referenced was the variance plan, and I believe the variance plan is up on the screen now.
Yes, that's the cover sheet. If you could go to the next page, please. Yes, so this is the, the second sheet that I referenced, which is the variance plan, which shows the property, shows the survey that we had previously provided to the board, but adding information such as the zone requirements, the, the setback lines, parking to this, to the plan.
Right. And it's labeled as the variance plan because you put all of the, the zoning data on there, but the applicant's not proposing any site improvements, is that correct?
That is correct. We are not proposing any site improvements, improvements. There were some C. variances that I testified to at the first hearing that are a result of the existing site conditions, the, in, in many cases, because of the fact that the municipal boundary, lot boundary goes through the middle of the building. But we added those to the variance plan. That's the same list that I had testified to.
And the second document that's referenced, actually, the, the third document that you referenced was the statement of operations. Can you summarize for the board what was added to the statement of operations from when you initially testified?
Yes. So most of the work in this case, all the work basically, was on the diesel and auto repair use. We, I listed comprehensively the items of repairs, 10 of those, as well as adding to the statement, items that were also testified to at the previous hearing about the fluids from the vehicles being, being stored in tanks and containers and being picked up, recycled by licensed Class D recycling centers. And also added hours of operation being 7:00 a.m. till 6:00 p.m., seven days a week, consistent with our testimony at the previous hearing.
And can you remind the board as to why we're here, the relief that we're seeking this evening? Can you just remind them what that relief is? And it doesn't relate to all the other uses on the property, is that correct?
That is correct. So what, recall that this site is in the PM1 zone, the pine land manufacturing zone, basically the industrial zone within Pine Lands. The site, the building has been 73 years old. My client has owned it, the applicant has owned it for 53 years. It is operated as a multi-tenant building, and of the, of the existing tenants, only one of them does not conform to the zoning ordinance, which is the diesel mechanic or auto repair. And it, that use that we're proposing, the, the D.1 variance.
And at the last hearing, you, you presented the planning testimony to support the D.1 relief?
Yes, I did.
And does your testimony change in any way based upon the information that you've provided to the board since the last meeting?
It, it does not. The, the purposes of zoning are met, in my opinion, by the use. The property is particularly suitable because it is a developed site since 1946, located with direct access to a county arterial road, being Whitesville Road. The uses do not generate significant sewage flows as compared to other uses that are permitted in the PM1 zone, which makes it particularly suitable for this site that does not have public sewer. The surrounding properties are all zoned PM1, including the adjoining industrial zone in Tom's River. The uses substantially conform to the ordinance requirements, and the uses are consistent to the existing uses on the surrounding properties in the PM1 zone.
And there was also C. variance relief that was requested and testified to at the last meeting. Has any of the C. variance relief been expanded upon or, or exacerbated as a result?
It has not. Those are all related to existing property conditions that have no, that are not affected by the proposed use variance. Maybe just to go back and tie, tie up one reminder on the, the D. variance. Please remember that in the ordinance, there is permitted use number 11, which states that in addition to all the above listed uses, any office or industrial use similar and not inconsistent with the above may be permitted, so long as they do not cause or result in, in the performance standards that I testified to at the last hearing, which are the dissemination of dust, smoke, smog, observable gas, fumes, or odors, noise, glare, or vibration, as well as hazardous fire or explosion.
So one final question is, in terms of other agencies having jurisdiction over this property and, and therefore having to act on this application, do either the Pine Lands or Tom's River have to review this application and act on it?
No, they do not, because we're not proposing any development.
And has an application been filed by Tom's River?
Yes.
With Tom's River, I should say?
Yes, we, we, as I testified to at the last hearing, we, we have an application we submitted to Tom's River. It is currently awaiting a smittle of a variance plan from my office to them, which, which I would, I intended to do once we completed the Jackson hearings.
So to clarify my previous question, if this board were to grant an approval, they could condition it upon Tom's River also acting on the application?
I mean, that would have no effect on this. This use that we're proposing for with this variance doesn't, doesn't occupy Tom's River at all.
And all activities within the Jackson township, township boundaries? Okay.
Yeah, and, and, and in fact, this, this use is permitted in the industrial zone in Tom's River. So, but I do not believe it would be appropriate to condition it, but certainly it's our intent to, to comply with any directives that we've received from Tom's River Township.
That's all.
Do you want to address Tom Smith's name?
Because he was on there.
Yeah, you want to wait for him?
Well, there's a letter that was submitted by Mr. Smith, who actually was the person, I knew the name was familiar, and then it just hit me. You want to wait till he?
If I may, since Mr. Smith followed the dictates with the virtual hearings, I would appreciate, we've acknowledged the fact that we have his March 1 submission. Obviously, he's here, he can amplify or testify towards any questions. I think it would behoove him as a matter of public and the board if you could address as a matter of public and the board, if you could address his six points that he did pre-submit.
Right. So we have that letter from March 1st from Mr. Smith, and there are six points. Mr. Borden, can you address point by point a response to those comments?
Certainly. So the, the first point was asking who prepared the wetlands delineation on the application. Has it been submitted to the Pine Lands Commission for verification? It is my understanding that Pine Lands verification is required. There is a, a finger of wetlands that, that's shown on variance plan. It's that, the double line that you see between, to the north of, of the proposed building. It's actually the wetlands are located between our, our building and Mr. Smith's house. Those wetlands were delineated by a consultant to, to us 12 years ago. My office has worked on and off with Mr. Fornacola for the past 14 years. 12 years ago, we delineated the wetlands. We did submit for a verification to the Pine Lands in 2008. I honestly do not know if they issued it. I, I attempted to contact them today, but it's very difficult with Pine Lands because their, the entire staff is working remotely and there's no access to their public records. But I would say to, to the final point of that sentence, that it's not required to have the verification because that, that, the verification is a tool for the applicant. It's, so even if not verif, even if not issued, it's irrelevant in, in my opinion. And we do provide a 175 foot wetland buffer along our side of the wetland. The opposite side faces Mr. Smith's property. His building, his house is actually within that buffer, but obviously it's an existing house and that's fine. Item number two, the Pine Lands Commission indicates that no submittals have been made, yet significantly more than 5,000 square feet has been cleared and filled on both Tom's River and Jackson lots, all that exists in the records of previous violations. I'm, I'm not, the only violation I'm aware of is the Tom's River violation for, for, for the, for the use of the property. I have never seen any violations from either Jackson or Tom's River, gator tandy disturbance. There, there, but admittedly, there had been some disturbance that is shown on our variance plan inside the wetland buffer. We were, we were alerted to that a couple of years ago. We directed Mr. Fornacola, the applicant, to remove any activity from the buffer. He did. We then, I recommended, and he accepted the fact that we, my company, survey stake the limit of the buffer, basically. And, and I, in fact, was out there today and I see that our stakes are still there. In fact, I see where a couple of the stakes, I assume Mr. Fornacola, but somebody put in larger lath and painted it bright safety orange. Basically, it's, it's, the intent there was to police the tenants to make sure that they don't creep into those areas. So, and there, and based upon my site inspection this morning, there, there has been no creep. So in my opinion, we are following the, the wetland buffer requirements. Number four, it talks about why aren't any historical violations being addressed? Again, the violations for clearing and wetland filling, I, I am not familiar with that. If, if they do exist, I would argue that we've addressed those, as I had just testified, because we had, you know, I said, removed any activity and removed some materials that were placed there, plus staked it and flagged it. Number five, the current diesel mechanic emits excessive noise and exhaust smoke, noting his children in road schooling. I, I can't obviously speak to personal knowledge on this. Obviously, a diesel engine is going to run outside. I think diesel engines run up and down White'sville Road all day long. I can't speak to any racing diesel, racing engines. I did talk to my client and, and he advised that he, you know, that he is not aware of any. And the Clifton Brothers, who operate the, the diesel repair shop are, are not doing that. They're, they're, and then number six, this goes back to the open violation case pending for Tom's River. This, this speaks again, this, this is the, this is the violation, I noted, I noted a notice of violation or about the land use on the outdoor portion, the land portion of Tom's River. As I said, we have a pending application and it is on my obligation to provide Tom's River zoning board a variance plan to complete that application, which I intend to do once we complete the hearings in Jackson.
So may I follow up there if, if I'm not jumping too far ahead? So Mr. Borden's testified, it was his opinion at least, that the board, this board need not condition any action or activity, or should the board act favorably on the actions of Tom's River? I guess my first question directed to Mr. Borden, since you have in fact submitted an application to the board, to Tom's River Township, where the site as a whole is impacted, would it not behoove the board to ensure that there's a coordinated effort in the development and enforcement of what goes on on the property, so that each board talks to the other? And to the extent that that's asking a legal question.
No, I understand.
Back, but I'm not.
I was just simply finding that the diesel use that we're seeking variance for here doesn't occupy any portion of Tom's River. But beyond that, I'll let the attorneys figure out what to do.
Well, okay. And that's fair because I'm going to take it respectfully, Mr. Alfieri, sort of ask the question the way you did, because quite frankly, the law is not always clear. And in your Oprah requests, this is a setup to another question, or if you would just accept that it be conditioned, maybe I don't have to go any further. But despite you finding that the building is totally assessed by Jackson Township, we can take your, your word on that. There's no contrary information to that. The way I understand the law is in turn, in terms of vesting the type of control over one municipality to another, it needs to be formalized by some resolution, which has not yet been found. I attempted to do it internally. I didn't find anything. It appears you didn't either.
Right. In fact, recall my testimony at the first hearing that the previous attorney, the Noye Law Firm, retired Judge Sida, actually contacted Tom's River and asked that if, if Jackson could have jurisdiction over the land use since the access in Jackson, you know, the, you know, the, you know, all of the activity, we accept limited activity is in Jackson. And Tom's River simply declined and said they're going to retain jurisdiction over their land. So thereby the variance application.
But I think that leads to the conclusion, respectfully, but I'm asking Mr. Alfieri, perhaps as a matter of legality, that any action of the board really should be coordinated.
Yeah, and we're, we're okay with it. That's why I asked the question. We have no objection.
I can see it in your eyes. But let me ask a, a follow-up, and arguably, I'm overcomplicating it. And so you can push back. I'll give you a softball. But wouldn't it behoove the applicant moving forward to actually address both municipalities formally? And should the board act favorably on this application? Which, wouldn't it, would it not serve both the applicant and quite frankly, both municipalities? That as a condition of approval, we, the board, should the board agree with this too? Ask you to, you would have a, a resolution, I'll say it as a statement as opposed to a question. You would have a formal resolution that as a condition of approval, you approach both municipal governments to, to opine on and solve this problem once and for all, so that you're not continually in this back and forth?
Well, number one, certainly, we have no issue with the condition that Tom's River approve whatever activities are occurring, as it relates to whatever Tom's River jurisdiction is. But we, and we have no problem writing to both the governing bodies of both towns and asking them if they would enter into an, an agreement to determine who controls zoning. But beyond that, we can't do any, we have no control over the outcome of that. And it takes two to tango here. So you need both to agree. But we have no problem writing that letter.
Giving, you know, perhaps giving each municipality 90 days, and if they don't act, then it would default back to the current condition. But at least the applicant would have something to fall back and back on to take some action. Because should the board agree that it should occur? I'm just offering that as a suggestion. And moreover, each municipality would see that at least this board spoke to the issue.
Not a problem. And we addressed Mr. Smith's letter, and that's all we have, Mr. Chair.
Any questions of Mr. Borden, board members? Mr. Hill? Yes? No, I didn't?
I do have several comments and questions. Ian, Mr. Borden, you had indicated the, regarding the septic system capacity, you, you performed an Oprah request, got some files from Ocean County Health Department, and that the existing septic disposal bed was repaired in 2007, excuse me, 2007. What was the repair, what, what did the repair entail?
Just a replacement of the stone and, and the pipe.
Okay. And you further indicate that the system has been servicing the site for many years. The estimated flow from the building is not increasing as a result of the proposed variances. What flow was that bed designed for?
Right. Recall that the original, or original is the wrong term.
Previous?
Previous use was a larger office.
Understood. What was the flow, what was the design flow in the documents that you received?
There was no design flow in the documents.
You couldn't?
Under, when you do a septic repair, we have the actual application and the approval. It simply states the size of the bed in the repair.
What was this? Okay. So, but you could go backwards from the size?
Yes. Well, that's, that's what, that's what we did and we backed, that's where that statement arises from.
So what, what's the, what's the daily flow then? What's the queue?
Yeah. I, I should have put that in my letter and I didn't. The daily flow was about 750 gallons per day.
Okay. Does that flow rate meet today's, does that, does 750 gallons per day, if that's what the design flow was for that bed, is, is that less than or equal to the design flow if you were to calculate it based on the current and proposed uses of this structure?
It's actually more than what it would be today.
Okay. I'd like to see that demonstrated on the plan.
That's fine.
Okay. Where is the septic tank located?
This, we, but we, we did not find it in the survey, but we believe it's located between the bed and the fence.
Within the paved driveway?
No, no, in that, outside that, outside the pavement.
Okay.
There, there's no visible manhole cover, so.
Okay. You had talked about the, you know, the history of how the wetlands were delineated on the property. However, that they have not been verified by the Pine Lands through any formal action or application.
We, we don't know that. We, we did work in, when I did a forensic analysis of my files, we have a submittal that we did from them in 2008. But then we don't have any final concluding document from Pine Lands. So.
So they essentially, that's fine.
That doesn't mean we didn't receive it. I mean, that was, you know, since, we, we scanned all of our files, you know? Back then, we were, we were a normal paper office. Now we're paperless. We did scan all of our documents. It's possible we missed it, but unfortunately, with the COVID situation, there's no way to, to get it from Pine Lands at this time.
Okay. So, all right. So the, the, the wetlands delineation may be non, not verified at this point. But that, that could be determined through additional correspondence with the Pine Lands.
Yes.
And I think where that's important to the board is in determining where the actual wetland buffer is. There, there's, as demonstrated by the survey and now the variance plan, it's, there has been historical encroachment within the wetland buffer. Mr. Borden indicated that his firm put in some temporary stakes to identify where the buffer is to try to avoid that in the future. One of the things I would recommend that the board consider is a more substantial barrier along the wetland buffer. Once that buffer is verified, and that could consist of a chain link fence along the wetland buffer. And I would also go further to say the chain link fence along the areas that are currently disturbed and occupied by the current activities. What we want to try to avoid, like we've seen in the past with other projects, is like Mr. Borden indicated, is tenant creep. They start, individual tenants start expanding beyond the limits that you're looking at on this plan. So I think a chain link fence would go as far as protect the wetlands buffer, once it's verified, and also preserve and delineate the areas of the site that are currently being used and currently being considered for more, a more, a more expansive use by this board. So I think that locks them down into a footprint.
That, that's acceptable. Okay.
You had indicated that, that the diesel repair shop is one of five tenants. However, we don't know, the variance plan does not depict what portion of the building that repair shop is occupying compared to the other four tenants, nor does the variance pan depict where that use has further access for or usage on the site. And I think if all four of your other tenants are permitted uses, but this one requires the use variance, I think it's imperative that the board, important, I'm sorry, important that the board have identified on the variance plan, what portion of the building is specific to a use variance, and what portion of the site can be used by that non-permitted use.
If that's something the board requires, we can certainly revise the plan to show that is correct.
Yes. And I could also refer back to, to the testimony I gave at the first hearing, just as a reminder, but we certainly do all the things that Evan asks, that the, the diesel use was 1,000 square feet, whereas the total building area is about 12,500. So it represents less than 10% of the building area.
Right. And that's in the, that's internal, understood. But then there's external areas too. And I think, I think that's important just for the board. I think that's very important because, look, we want every business to be successful and expand. However, they're here for a use variance for a very specific thing at this point. And I think both towns' code enforcement need to know what, what was approved. Was it a thousand square foot? Or was it the potential to be 12,000 square foot? So I think we need to lock down the non-permitted use on this plan, so it can be subject to, to future code enforcement. I think what's also equally important for it to be delineated on the variance plan, especially with multi-tenant buildings, are the identification and delineation of emergency access aisles. And those would be areas that would be subject to no further use or encroachment by the individual tenants of storage of materials and so on. Mr. Borden, we, we delineated those areas on other projects that you did, like A&amp;A and so on. So I don't think that's, I don't think that's difficult. What I would suggest is though, it, it further delineate those areas that can be used in that rear gravel area versus emergency access aisles that are to remain clear, and somehow maybe delineate those emergency access aisles somehow, whether it's with parking bumpers or so on.
Understood.
Okay. That's all I have for now. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Hill. Mr. Peters, before, before we go to you, Mr. Alfieri, I'm, I'm curious, there, there are a series of questions and information that I would like to hear, but I would like to hear it from the actual diesel mechanic that is going to be utilizing this 1,000 square foot space. I know Mr. Borden is not a diesel mechanic, and so thus, I, I would suspect his lack. Not that he would elaborate in the wrong direction, I just would prefer more expert testimony from the diesel mechanic as to exactly what is, what his intention is to expand upon the statement of operations. Is, is the diesel mechanic here to testify?
Is he here?
He is not. Is the owner of the building here to testify?
Yes.
All right. He may know something, he may not. But in any event, I am, I am going to be very curious to hear a whole lot more detail on this statement of operations and how that has got to dovetail into and, and answer the questions under subparagraph 11. In those subparagraphs, as it relates to dust, smoke, smog, observable gas, fumes, odors, vibrations, et cetera, so that we, so that we will know exactly what's going on inside that 1,000 square foot building, what What type of systems is he using? Is he using pneumatic systems? Is he using air guns? Is he going to be using drills? Is he going to be using different forms of acetylene torches or heliarc torches? Is he familiar with runway engines on diesel engines? Have you experienced any types of exploding engines? Is he going to be running engines outside, et cetera, et cetera? Which all relate to whether or not this is going to be an acceptable use in that spot. Thank you.
And I'm not sure, I'd have to ask Mr. Fornicola if he's capable of answering that level of detail. I don't know.
Yeah, so, and Mr. Alfieri, you were in here. From my recollection is, and I see the board, that Mr. Book, who, as you can tell, is, at least knows enough to articulate the questions he wants to ask, made specific reference to having someone available to be able to ask those questions.
I, okay.
I know, I'm just, you know, this ought not to come to be a surprise.
I'm not here to testify as an expert, but I alluded to the fact that I grew up in a family where my dad was a diesel mechanic for many years. So I have a little bit of knowledge that leaked in, and so I know a little bit, a little bit to know that there are very specific things that I would like to hear sitting here as a board member in terms of what's going to take place on these massive trucks inside a 1,000-square-foot building.
You learned enough to go to law school and not become a mechanic.
That's true.
At least your father did.
Yes, exactly.
I have to defer to the parties who were present as to whether we can, whether we can at some point bring this diesel?
Well, I mean, I know the question was asked at the last hearing, and I think I offended some people when I said it, and I don't know if I should say it again, but I've never seen a use variance testimony where we bring a tenant. He's a tenant. He might be there for one month. We're trying to get a use approved.
Yeah, but, but see, that's where we're, okay, that's a fair point to make. So let's expand.
So every time, yeah.
Let's expand on the record, because I'm not, I'm going to make sure the board doesn't get upset for your point, but I'm going to opine upon that. And that is that the, since the use is specific, and you have someone who can opine on those questions, it's not whether the person is a tenant or the use is a tenant or an owner. That's what you're asking, that's the point of the variance.
And to further that, maybe the use, although you're causing a diesel repair can be limited to eliminate certain dangerous activities or activities that would definitely impact under paragraph 11 and make this very much a disfavored application. That's why I would like to hear it and move forward.
And for the chair and board members, I believe at the last meeting, we also discussed that we've, this board has had numerous tenants over the years come in to support their use variance applications in multi-tenant buildings. DNS Motors was one. Chris's Customs was one, and he was an auto painter. DNS Motors was an automotive repair shop. Those are the first two that pop into my head, but we've had several come in.
Can we then discuss the findings of my Oprah research that found that a zoning permit was given in the zone for a diesel repair shop up the street? Wouldn't that render that use a permitted use?
I think, as you know, a variance is given specific to an application, and that applicant's demonstration at that site was ideally suited. I don't, I know, I know you know you can't make that leap.
Well, it's not a leap. It's a simple, it's a simple approval letter from the zoning officer.
Yeah, it wasn't a variance approval.
It wasn't a variance approval. It was, it was an approval of the use in the zone.
I just don't know, and I don't know if Ian knows what the zone standards were then versus what they are today.
Well, I do know the zone standards in the PM1 zone have remained unchanged since first adopted in 1981.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Hill.
I have a question somewhat, not somewhat, a lot more basic. I'm reading the statement of operation, I believe it was prepared by Mr. Borden, and the D1 variances that are being requested seem to be twofold. One is for a diesel and auto repair shop, and the other is for truck and equipment storage outdoor only. Is that correct? Is that, that's, okay. It's kind of interesting to me, because I've read the ordinances here as it relates in section 244, 97 is the Pine Lands manufacturing zone. The storage, I don't have much of a problem with the diesel auto repair, as you testified, because there are provisions in the ordinance that allows farm machinery repairs and something like that. So I can imply that maybe if I knew what the uses were going to be, and if I knew exactly what the use was going to be, I might be able to infer from the ordinance or find that the ordinance implies that vehicle repairs are within the plan that's been proposed. But the outdoor storage, you say outdoor only, that sounds to me like a principal use. And what I think is interesting about the ordinance has been structured. Every section I read, not every, the majority of sections that I read that are applicable, all of the storage issues speak to incidental use, which means to me is an accessory use. Accessory to what use?
If I?
And it also is clear that it has to be inside, not outside. Now, I know you referred to one section in your testimony, whether it was last time or this time, where it speaks about the following. It's section B, 24497B1, says, "Private garage space necessary to store and repair any vehicles associated with a permitted principal use on the premises." It's garage space, so, you know, talk about storage, things of that nature. There are a number of places. 24497A5 speaks about storage of goods and must be inside. So this is, you know, this is not a situation where there is a presumption, because it is not specifically permitted, that the presumption is that it's prohibited. This ordinance specifically, specifically prohibits it as a principal use. And now, I haven't heard any testimony on your obligation to reconcile the grant to the variance versus the absence from the ordinance specifically, and the ordinance is very specific on prohibited uses.
Let me clarify that, because that, what you described is not what we're looking for, and that's my fault for not explaining it well enough. The intent for the outdoor storage and parking of equipment and trucks, as I described it, is not intended to be an accessory use. It is intended to be used by the principal tenants of this building. In other words?
No, it is going to, it is an accessory.
Well, I, see, I don't, in other words, we have, again, a multi-tenant building. We have existing tenants in a building that are permitted uses. There are contractors and warehousing, as I described, as you correctly state in my statement. But those same contractors have the need to park their truck overnight, their trailer overnight.
Well, that would be an accessory use.
Okay.
But what you're seeking here, from what I've read, is a principal use.
Then I just reversed it.
So is the question, the question that?
It's accessory to what?
To permitted uses.
To which one?
But is there going to be a tenant there that only rents space to store equipment outside?
No, no.
So there's no tenant that's going to need the outside space?
Only those that have inside space can park outside.
But we're not talking about parking vehicles. We're talking about storage of goods. That's what you have in your statement.
Right, we're primarily talking about parking of trucks, trailers, and equipment.
Your statement of operation, correct me if I'm wrong, on the very first page says, "Truck and equipment storage, per ends, outdoor only, closed per ends." We're not talking about parking a vehicle. We're talking about outside storage of equipment.
Right, but the equipment being, as I described there, such as backhoes, skids, skiers, excavators.
That's what?
Backhoe, skid steer, or excavator as examples. That is what defines as equipment.
But it's not incidental to a specific tenant use?
Sure it is. It is incidental to a specific tenant.
Which one?
We have, again, we have five tenants in the building. We have, I'll repeat, we have one office tenant who is a site remediation engineer, who has some equipment that he uses to do site remediation work. We have a landscaper, another tenant, who would park his trucks, trailers, when the trailer might have a lawnmower or such on it. We have another tenant who's a building framer, who might park a truck or a trailer, possibly with a skid steer or a forklift on it. Those are permitted uses that are occupying the site now. I personally, I don't even know that that variance is required. I asked, I asked for it out of an abundance of caution, because they are related to existing permitted tenants. But one of the issues that we continue to have with code enforcement in town is, and not trying to, always try to learn from what's given to me, and that it seems to be, the code enforcement department seems to take a different opinion where they want us to adjudicate these things here. I don't necessarily agree with that, but they continually list those items as violations on properties.
And Mr. Borden, all I can say is I agree with the chairman here on the presentation and the questions that have been raised, that if there's going to be storage, where is it going to be? If it is going to be incidental, is it incidental to which tenant? Where is that tenant located? How big is the storage area going to be? Is it shielded? Is it not shielded? Is it enclosed? Is it going to be outside? Is it a principal use or accessory use? A lot of those have not been, to me, satisfactorily answered. I think you need to do a little work on that.
Through the chair, please.
Yes, Ms. Matt.
Mr. Borden, I'm going to follow up to what Mr. Hurley just spoke about. You know, we've heard different testimony from you on this outdoor parking. At one point, you testified that the parking would only be for tenants. Then you were asked if anyone other than tenants would be parking there, and you said, yes, it would just be used as, you know, a parking space for someone who's renting that. And tonight, again, you said that it would only be for tenants. So can you please clarify that?
I don't recall ever testifying to the middle thing about just, we're not renting spaces for people here.
You testified to that last time, if I remember correctly.
I'd like to read the transcript, but I don't believe I ever testified.
So we don't, here's the bottom line. It's clarified now. There's no separate, every parking, all the parking uses and all the storage uses are related to tenants of the building.
Correct. It will always be accessory to occupant of the building. But we understand that you want more information, and you want it demarcated, and you want to connect the outside to the inside. We can put all that together.
We, I need to see what the impact is going to be, where the storage is going to be, how much storage is going to be there, where it is located, does it impact in terms of circulation patterns? Everything that relates to the D1 variance. And whether it's an accessory use or a principal.
Understood.
Mr. Before, I thought I might have cut you off. Were you looking to chime in on an issue, Mr.? No, okay, I'm sorry.
Ernie wants to speak? Ernie wants to speak? Ernie, you, did you want to say something?
Yeah, if the chairman was ready, I just had a couple of issues. Pardon me to follow up on what Evan had brought up. And I apologize to everyone that these may seem sort of shotgun all over the place, but Evan had talked about the Pine Lands issues, and Ian, I think you said something along the lines of your last correspondence was in '08 or something, that you had access to.
That's what, that's what our files indicated, yes.
Okay, but the Oprah information you submitted to the board had a letter from the Pine Lands dated August 3, 2011, to Mr. Zuccarelli.
Right, that was on the other site, though, Ernie. That was on the DNM, that's on the DNM Diesel site. That's not on my property.
Okay.
Remember, I had testified that I questioned if a diesel mechanic is a permitted use in the zone, because there's one existing up the street. And I was asked to do an Oprah request of that site to see if there was any evidence of that use being approved. So those relate to the 440 White School.
That Oprah material is from the township Oprah, not the?
Correct, correct.
But I guess, what's the purpose of these three letters? It doesn't appear that there's any conclusion to the property. Is it an August 3, 2011 letter, or an August 5, I'm sorry, an October 5, 2011 letter from Pine Lands to Mr. Zuccarelli? And then a February 15, 2012 letter to Michael Avacqua from DNM Diesel Repair.
Right.
None of these are final documents or continually requesting additional information.
Correct.
I'm trying to find what the purpose of these submissions were.
Those have no relevance to this application, as I said when I described the letters. But I didn't want to give you half of what I got from Oprah. Every document that I got from Oprah, I gave you.
Thank you. I guess to either one of you, Mr. Alfieri or Mr. Borden, we've had a lot of testimony, and at some point, I don't know if I got confused or lost, what are we, at some point, I want to clarify what it is we're here for. Because the original application, and we sort of paraphrased it in our report, what you were asking for approval for. The D1 use variance to permit multiple principal uses, a use that's not permitted in the zone. Ian had made comment in his February 25 email to Ms. Agostino, which was copied to all of the professionals. It says, "It seems there's evidence a truck garage has been permitted in the PM1 zone by previous actions of the zoning officer. As a result, I question if the use variance for the existing mechanic use at the Fornicola site is required at all." So is that in furtherance of your use variance application? Are you asking for the board to judge that a use variance for that is not necessary? I guess we've had a lot of testimony, but I need someone to wrap up for the board and the public. What do y'all ask him for this board to approve? So I'll leave it.
I'm sorry. I can answer that. My understanding is we're asking for D1 relief for that specific mechanic use.
And in support, and one element of support of that request is?
That a zoning officer ruled 20 years ago or so that a variance wasn't needed, based on that limited information in that doc.
Okay, then I would just, for clarification, Ian, it appears the original application asked for approval to permit multiple principal uses within the existing building. And I thought you had went through in your testimony at the last meeting by saying that the professional office was permitted, the two contractors' offices were permitted, the car detail, and then the diesel repair was required a variance. So I just want to make sure that y'all get what you're asking for, and so there's some consistency, so that someone can prepare a resolution for you. I'll leave it to you guys. I won't.
Salvoed correctly from what I was seeking.
Okay. And my last comment question is, given the totality of everything we have, when we're done with the use variance, is there going to be a need for a site plan? Drawing, application? I know we, the board asked for and received a variance plan, which was helpful to them to understand the use variances before then. So I guess I need to throw out there, when the board ultimately decides the use variance issue, should there be either a site plan drawing or a site plan application to legitimize what's on the site and to say that this goes with it? I guess I'll just, I'll start with the applicant's professionals. Will there need to be a site plan application subsequent to an affirmative use variance decision?
I don't think, I mean, I think it's more semantics. I think the end result is the board needs a plan that shows exactly what's happening on site, that demarcates the various areas. A site plan, in my mind, is something where you're making site improvements, and you therefore have to show those site improvements. We could probably call the variance plan, accomplish the same thing.
I think, I think if, once the board receives a variance plan that
Uh, I, I think, I think if, once the board receives a variance plan that, that meets the level of, their level of expectation of what they want to see on a variance plan, at that point, they can make the determination if any future, if any additional site plan, um, modifications need to be performed to accommodate the proposed use.
That's fair.
Mr. Chairman, that's all I have, based upon Mr. Boarden's testimony to date. Thank you.
And can I just ask for clarification? Because, uh, you had indicated, you had made a comment, Mr. Boarden, I believe, that this, this other property you gave us Oprah for, this 440 Whitesville Road, was, was approved by the zoning officer just through a issuance of a permit for a diesel repair shop? Where in this documentation is it saying? Because I'm having a hard time of finding it. So I'm just asking, I'm asking you to point me towards that. Was that for Nate National Waste Disposal?
The 1992 letter from Bill Fox, zoning officer, stated that the truck garage use at the DNM site is, or at the 440 is permitted.
Okay, so I want to, let me get into that a little bit. Let me find it first. That wasn't specific to DNM.
No.
Right, that was specific for a, a class A recycling facility use. That was not specific to a diesel mechanic shop.
I understand, but it was a truck garage use.
It's not a diesel mechanic shop. So I, I really think you need to hone in where, what direction you're going to go on this. I don't think that's a fair comparison, because that, that zoning permit, what you're referencing there, was issued based on the fact that there was an approved site plan for a similar use that pre-existed that waste disposal company, and that's why he issued the zoning permit. He didn't, you have to go through the whole document, Ian, not just the one page that kind of gleams a little bit of what you want to see.
No, I, I do understand that, but he unequivocally uses the term.
From the board's standpoint, I don't think that was a fair assessment to say that the zoning permit back in, the zoning officer back in 1992 issued a zoning permit allowing a some, the same use on a different property in this zone. It's just not, it's not accurate, just not accurate.
Well, we agree to disagree. It's, the letter states, "This site is approved as a truck garage terminal, period." That's all I said in my email, Evan. I didn't say it was approved as DNM Diesel. I said it was approved as a truck garage, and that is accurate.
Board members, any further questions of Mr. Boarden?
Anything further? Mr. Fierri?
You mean Alfieri?
Alfieri, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
You weren't present the last meeting, and we made it a point to state to have the tenant available. I'm echoing the chairman, which I did the last meeting, and he still didn't produce somebody so we can at least testify to the safety of these issues. That's all my concern about.
I'm not coming back without the tenant. So if he doesn't come, I won't be here.
Mr. Alfieri, it's, it's 10:15. Um, I, I, do, do you have any other testimony that you want to present tonight? Uh, I would like to get to the public on what they have heard tonight.
Yeah, that's fine. Let's get to the public.
Get to the public?
Yeah.
All right. So, and there's no further questions of Mr. Boarden, professionals, no additional comments? And, and your testimony with Mr. Boarden is, is concluded?
For tonight, yes.
For tonight?
Yes.
All right, then, um, then at this point, I will then open it up to the public, see if anybody is there. Anthony, I'm looking at my screen, I see five attendees, but I do see a, a hand went up. Tom Smith? Okay. I don't see him on my screen, but okay. Mr. Smith, are you there? There he is. Okay, I can see you, but I can't hear you.
How about now? Yeah, it does, it kicks you out and brings you back in. I understand this is, this is going to be a return for this, sir?
Hold on, Mr. Smith, you have to be sworn in.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, you, new application. Do you solemnly swear affirm, and you, I think you were previously sworn at the last meeting as well, that any questions, comments that you're about to present to the board will represent the truth, all truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
You were previously sworn on this application offer, correct?
Correct.
All right, Mr. Smith, any questions or concerns directed to Mr. Boarden and Mr. Alfieri on this application?
Um, I, I just have a few points. One is for the, for the D application, uh, the benefits versus detriment. Uh, I just think it's a, a property owner benefit, um, versus detriment to adjacent residents. Um, I, I know there's the issues that come up with, uh, non-conforming use in the Pine Lands residential. This PM1 is a pretty small zone. Right now, it's got 17 residential uses in it. Um, so I don't, I don't think that can be ignored, and as far as the, uh, PM1 ordinance, uh, talking about required buffers for PM1 meeting a residential zone, I believe the intention of that ordinance would be for residential use. And I mean, that can be probably adjudicated at a different time, but, uh, the, the point I want to bring up is that, uh, Mr. Boarden is testifying that there's everyone using the truck terminal in the back, which is primarily on what's shown as the filled and cleared areas that are both in Jackson, uh, and in Tom's River, are all used by the building. Um, there are dump trucks and a paving machine and a roller back there. I didn't hear him mention a, a paving contractor, uh, as using the building. Uh, the septic system, I, I couldn't make, um, estimates about that, but it, basically, there, then, there was no new information brought up, other than the system's been there a long time, and it's still repaired at some point. Uh, there's upwards of 25 or so cars there in the daytime, in addition to all the trucks that are parked in the back. So, um, I think it's pretty questionable to, even to know the number of people that use the building and the area. Outdoor storage, there's currently outdoor storage of materials that I can see from my house, pallets of materials, under wraps, parked behind the trucks in the area on the Jackson lot that was cleared. Um, and I absolutely, the diesel mechanic could not operate without utilizing the areas that have been cleared and filled without any approvals. Pine Lands responds to me, so I don't know why there's an issue with getting information from them. Uh, my understanding from talking to Pine Lands and, and wetlands expert is that, yes, a wetlands delineation in the Pine Lands is under the purview, review, and, and, um, um, like a validation by Pine Lands Commission. It, it's absolutely required, and the areas that were cleared were required for Pine Lands, and they've told me that there's been no applications made. So, all the fill that's been brought in, and I watched this, I, and I really appreciate whoever was on the board who said, you know what, we need a temporary stop for the creep, because we watched those contractors dumping their trailers of material in the woods for years now, and just go on Google Earth, you can see how much the places has been filled in and cleared in the back. And, you know, there's, you have ordinance 0420, which even includes, uh, vegetated waste dumped in there. If lands, I see the landscapers dumping their trucks with stumps and everything else, all of that should be a violation, so I don't understand why, why Jackson hasn't, uh, looked at that. I can see it right out, right out my back door, all the stuff that's dumped in the woods back there. And then the question of, all the fill that's been brought in, I brought up before, you know, probably several thousand yards, where did it come from? Is there any documentation? We watched tri axles come in and dump that material, um, and I did send lots of emails, you know, complaining about that. Does that mean, is there any material in there? Is there road millings, anything that doesn't meet, uh, the required standards, residential standards, right in your, your ordinance? So, um, I, I do have a lot of issues. The only other thing I'd like to say is if this, there's going to be a return on this, I don't think it's that I could have the opportunity to share information on the screen, videos of, of the trucks that I've been complaining about smoking out our yard. Uh, I have several just from Friday. I just picked one random day. Um, but I'd like to be able to attend and bring exhibits. I just think that would be fair, because, you know, essentially, we're trying to protect our home, um, and if I'm...
Things, one, um, ba- based on the current, uh, executive orders and the size of the room, uh, you as an individual, um, you certainly can attend, though, for any evidence that you have available, you would be governed really by the same obligations that the applicant has, which, to pre-submit them, so our technical people can post them on the website, so that folks who are attending virtually can also follow through. That being said, similarly, should you determine that you do not wish to, uh, appear, um, this goes to our point, questions today, should you, or any other member of the public, quite frankly, determine that you do not wish to appear live, given my interpretation of the current DCA guidelines? So long as you pre-submit your exhibits as to what you're going to then ultimately testify to, uh, we have, you should coordinate with, um, Mr. Beporo, who can contact, you, put you in touch with the, um, tech folks here, but you have the same right to present evidence and testimony as the applicant does.
Yeah, that'd be very helpful, thank you.
Okay, anything further, Mr. Smith?
No, thanks.
Mr. Alfieri, any response? Is there anything that he has said?
No, I'm, we'll have to see his exhibits and et cetera, whenever the next meeting is.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Smith.
Thank you.
Um, is there anyone else from the public that would like to be heard? David, are you there? David V. Hello?
All right.
Hello?
Hear you, David, but we just can't see you yet.
Uh, one second.
All right. All right, there you are.
Evening.
Visconti, you raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear affirm that the information, questions, comments, or testimony you're about to present before the board will represent the truth, all truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Um, before you, uh, testify though, and again, if my recollection is wrong, uh, Mr. Alfieri, I think Visconti's a, is an employee of the municipality. Does any of the, has any of the information that you're about to present been proffered or obtained as a, as a municipal officer?
No, sir.
So, and, and did your testimony, you're, I assume you're a resident of Jackson?
Yes, uh, I live a half a mile north of the site.
All right, and so your testimony is as a resident, not in your official, your official capacity?
Yes.
All right, and then, and then I, well, I guess I could, I could ask you questions after I hear what you have to say.
Sure.
Can you give us your address, though?
441 Whitesville Road, Jackson. All right, Mr. Visconti, specific to this application as a resident, what are your questions or comments for the applicant? Would you like me to spell my last name? Please, thank you.
Sorry about that.
Okay. Uh, V is in Victor, I S C O N I. Um, I, I, maybe I missed it, but, um, I, I was a little concerned about the, uh, septic system issue. Uh, is it, it, it's my understanding that the leach field is located in the back of the building?
No, it's located in the front of the building.
Okay. Um, the only other thing I had was regarding, uh, Mr. Hill mentioned, uh, had a recommendation for a perimeter fence to deter the parking lot creeping. Uh, to Mr. Smith's benefit, uh, I would suggest perhaps, uh, perhaps a, um, an improvement on just a chain link fence, uh, perhaps a board-on-board fence, or something of that nature, to help, uh, screen out the site from his home. And, um, that's all I have to say. Thank you, Mr. Visconti. All right. Are there any other members of the public that would like to be heard? Uh, Anthony, I'm not seeing anybody else. How about you? That's it?
Yeah.
All right. And to close the public portion of this hearing.
All right.
So we need to establish a new date to continue. Mr. Boarden said he needs a couple of weeks to put together that plan, and then we obviously have to get it in, in advance, so we need 30 days to, at least.
Well, because Mr. Mary took the last spot at the next meeting.
I, I would say May.
Through the chair. I have a request for Mr. Boarden. When you come back, can you possibly tell us exactly where the septic is located? Because it seems to keep coming up, and you said before that you didn't know where it was located.
Yeah, it is, it is shown. If you look at your variance plan, it's on there. It's clearly shown. What Evan was asking about where the septic tank is, but if you look at your, your zoning map.
Wait, but the septic tank itself?
Yeah, but the, the, the disposal bed, which is the disposal part of the septic, is shown on the, uh, on the plan.
Okay, but where is it?
The tank is just a manhole bef, on the line between the delivery pipe to the, to the bed. For example, like what Mr. Visconti was questioning was the disposal bed, and that is shown on the plans.
Okay, I thought you said you didn't know, because it was just a cap, and you didn't know where it was.
Well, that, that was regarding the tank. The tank is just a manhole, but the, but the, but the, the rectangular septic disposal system, the system of pipes and stone, that, that actually disperses the waste into the ground, is shown on the plans.
So, Mr. Fritsch, oh, go ahead.
I'm sorry, so, and that's what gets pumped out? Or isn't it the tank that gets pumped out?
Well, the, for maintenance, the, the sludge is collected in the tank. That's what gets pumped out periodically. The liquid waste goes into the ground by the disposal bed, and that is what's shown on the plan. That's the capacity that Mr. Hill was questioning.
Yeah, but what you didn't tell her was, the question was, where was the manhole so you can vacuum out the sludge?
Correct, and I said, we don't know where that is. I don't know where that is, that's correct.
That's what she's asking.
Right.
Okay, well, I, I think it's a, the understanding of terms. When I hear, when we do septic design all the time, when we hear septic, that 99% of the time means a septic bed.
I'm not concerned with that.
So, just along those same lines, um, you're hearing necessity and request versus specifics. So one reason that we've suggested the May 5th date is that should give you more than substantial time to put that variance plan together, what we would ask the applicant avail themselves of, um, is the board has previously approved a technical review committee meetings with, with the professionals prior, so we'd ask Mr. Alfieri, who I'm presuming is going to, uh, bring that diesel person here, so he'll be part of this, um, but who, that, uh, someone reach out to also, in between today and the May 5th date to which this matter is being carried, without the need of further notice, by the way, and the public is directed to look at the municipal website and municipal postings for, uh, virtual, uh, participation, that you avail yourselves of the TRC process. As you hear, as Fritsch's request, board, et cetera, and have an opportunity to review that in sufficient time, so if at least the professionals feel it remains, uh, that there's more information that ought to be presented, that would have been vetted at least amongst the professionals.
That would be helpful.
Thank you.
Okay, so the, uh, the applicant grants the board an extension of time in which to act, and it's being carried to May 5th, and thank you all, and we'll see, I'll probably see you before then, but otherwise, we'll see you then.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Alfieri. I'd say no further matters on the agenda. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
All in favor? All right, we are adjourned.